I would like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, February 2, 2016. We will all rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag to be led by Karen Steele, Principal, George Washington Carver Center for the Arts and Technology, and Joe Gyra, Principal, Hareford High School. We will remain standing for a moment of silent meditation in memory of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is consideration of the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda, Dr. Dance?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Under new business after report on Southwest Area Elementary School Boundary Study Recommendation, I would like to add action taken in closed session to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. In accordance with the Board of Education Policy 8314, additional items can be added to the agenda by unanimous consent of the board members present. All in favor of adding agenda action item taken in closed session to tonight's agenda, signify by a show of hands.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I have an agenda change request as well.
We have to vote on-
Do it separately.
Separately.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor of adding action taken in closed session to tonight's agenda, signify by a show of hands. All opposed? Okay, so the agenda will be changed as corrected. Ms. Miller?
Yes, I ask that the agenda be reordered so that the stakeholder and public comments come before consideration of the reappointment of the superintendent.
All right, that motion, is there a second? All right.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of rearranging the agenda, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, the agenda will remain the same. Thank you. Our next item is selection of speakers. Sign-up cards were available to the public prior to the meeting for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting to ten. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to discuss his or her issue. The completed sign-up cards for this evening have been placed in the box, and the first ten drawn from the box will be our speakers for tonight during the public comment portion of the meeting. If fewer than ten sign-up cards are received, all who sign up will be permitted to speak.
The first speaker is David Green. The second speaker has no first name, just White. Third speaker is Kaia Johnson. Number four is Marion Moore. Number five is Sarah Rosen. Number six, Beverly Grace. Number seven, Chris Zak. Number eight, Kevin Hill. Number nine, Mary Duval. Number ten, Linda S- 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 Pearl, S-P-R-I-U-L-L.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis. All right, our next agenda item is a special order of business, consideration of the reappointment of the superintendent. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Yolfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolution. The term of the Superintendent of Schools for Baltimore County, S. Dallas Dance, Ph.D., expires by law on June 30, 2016. And whereas Dr. Dance has communicated to the board that he is a candidate for reappointment as Superintendent of Schools, and whereas the board has reviewed performance materials deliberated over the course of time regarding Dr. Dance's reappointment, and whereas the board has heard from the public regarding Dr. Dance's reappointment in writing, at board meetings, and at a public hearing, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints S. Dallas Dance, Ph.D., as the Superintendent of Schools for a four-year term of office effective July 1, 2016, subject to the Board of Education and Dr. Dance entering into a mutually agreeable contract and further subject to the statutory mandated approval of the state superintendent of schools.
All right, there's been a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Get some motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay, as many as are in favor of the reappointment of Dr. S. Dallas Dance, as your name is called, answer aye or yes. Those opposed will answer nay or no. And those who wish not to vote will answer abstain. Please call the roll.
Mr. Posy?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Yolfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Longley?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, there's a very important reason why I need to know what the number was.
Ten to two.
Ten to two.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next order of business is consideration of the superintendent's contract. Since the board has voted to reappoint Dr. Dance to another four-year term, do I have a motion to authorize commencing contract negotiations with Dr. Dance?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Posy? No.
Mr. Collins?
I wasn't paying attention. I don't know what this is votes for.
Commence contract negotiation.
Commencing contract negotiations with Dr. Dance.
Let me think about it. Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Yolfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Longley?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
By what number? By what number? I want to say that to the public.
Eleven one. Thank you. All right, moving through our agenda, we have a special order of business where we're recognizing former board members, and this is one of the pleasures of having these board members. So I would ask at this point for Mr. Parker to come up first, and then Mr. George Montiotis It really, it truly is a pleasure to welcome back Mr. Ed Parker, who was a board member when I first came on and was a mentor to me and really encouraged me in all my participation on the board. And I would just ask, I know you have some family here, but could you introduce your family that's with you tonight, Mr. Parker?
I have my lovely wife Fran. I have my son Michael Parker, who is also a principal. I'm here representing myself.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And it's with great pleasure I present this resolution to you. It reads, "Whereas H. Edward Parker has served as a member of the Board of Education of Baltimore County with distinction and honor from July 2006 through June 2015, and he has provided exemplary service to the students, parents, and staff of Baltimore County Public Schools as Vice President of the Board for four consecutive years, 2007, '08, '09, and '10. And whereas Mr. Parker has worked actively for the achievement of all Baltimore County students with focus on raising the bar and eliminating achievement gaps, and he has served on the following Board of Education Committees: Audit Committee, where he served as Chair, Member of the Building and Contracts and Curriculum Committees, and Vice Chair of the Policy Review Committee. And whereas he also served on the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Insurance Committee, and Mr. Parker did represent the Board on Ethics Review Panel. And whereas he always placed the needs of all students as his first priority. And whereas Mr. Parker has committed his time and expertise to the Baltimore County Public Schools community now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Baltimore County, herewith assembled in regular session on the second day of February in the year 2016, recognizes the outstanding contributions of H. Edward Parker, and be it further resolved that the Board does herewith extend its deepest appreciation and gratitude for his dedication, loyalty, and service, and further extends its best wishes for good health, happiness, and continued success in future endeavors." Thank you so much, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the resolution. However, I believe unless you misread it, that he served until December of 2015. I thought you said July.
Oh, maybe George was until December.
No, Ed was here until December also.
No, no.
Well, there was somebody sitting-
It is correct.
There was somebody sitting in this seat that looked just like him.
I second that motion.
But anyway.
Second?
I second the motion, please.
In favor, please, Sam.
Hi.
Thank you.
This is a great honor, and I want to thank you all for doing this. It's very humbling to stand here and have your service recognized. And I want to thank Governor Ehrlich and Governor O'Malley for giving me the appointment to be able to serve the citizens and the students of Baltimore County. It has been my privilege and my honor to have been able to serve the people of Baltimore County. Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. George Montiotis. Mr. Montiotis was also a mentor to me as I began on the board a few years back, and as the board attempts to reach out to the community and understand the needs of our parents and others in the system, Mr. Montiotis is very connected to our communities all around Baltimore County and has been a unique resource in trying to reach out to the community and understand what the public needs in our school system and education system. So it's with great pleasure that I present this resolution to Mr. George Montiotis. Whereas George Montiotis has served as a member of the Board of Education of Baltimore County with distinction and honor from July 2010 through December 2015, and whereas he has provided exemplary service to the students, parents, and staff of Baltimore County Public Schools, and Mr. Montiotis has worked actively for the achievement of all Baltimore County students with focus on raising the bar and eliminating achievement gaps, and whereas he has served on the following Board of Education Committees: Building and Contracts Committee, where he not only served as a member, but was Chair and Vice Chair, and the Government Relations Committee. And whereas Mr. Montiotis served on the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee, and served as one of the board's liaisons to the Education Foundation of Baltimore County. Whereas Mr. Montiotis placed the needs of all students as his first priority, and whereas Mr. Montiotis has committed his time and expertise to the Baltimore County Public Schools community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Baltimore County, herewith assembled in regular session on the second day of February in the year 2016, recognizes the outstanding contributions of George J. Montiotis, and be it further resolved that the Board does herewith extend its deepest appreciation and gratitude for his dedication, loyalty, and service, and further extends its best wishes for good health, happiness, and continued success in future endeavors. Congratulations so much. At this time, I would like to ask George to introduce-
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
I'm going to ask Mr. Montiotis to introduce any family he has with him tonight.
Yes, thank you very much, Charlie. I'd like to introduce my wife, Lillian. And if she's in the room, Deborah. And with Deborah is her friend, Tom. But again, I just want to say a few words, even though I got a little technical difficulty with my hearing aid, I don't have to hear my own comments, but I want to thank, I too want to thank, first Senator Dolores Kelly. Dolores approximately six years ago approached me and asked me if I would like to be considered for the school board. And I told her I would. And Dolores Kelly is an old friend and just outstanding senator from Baltimore County. Second, we went through a screening system. We had to be recommended by the county executive, and I sincerely thank Jim Smith for, when he was the county executive, for referring me to Governor O'Malley for appointment. And finally, thank Governor O'Malley and his staff for the rigorous interviews that we went through to be selected and be appointed by the governor. And I also want to thank Ed Parker, because he was with a screening committee that put me through the wringer on two occasions to see if I had the stuff and stamina to be a member of the Baltimore County Public School System. So indeed, I'm humbled, I'm proud that we did something for the children of Baltimore County. And let me just say this, I'm also proud that the school board put their issues behind them and reappointed a gentleman who's put his stamp on his own legacy here in Baltimore County, that's Dr. Dallas Dance.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to ask one of our board members that served with George and Ed to come forward, Mr. Bowler, Mike Bowler. Sure. Okay, go ahead, right ahead.
I want to thank everyone for giving me a couple of minutes to talk, and I will, I promise it'll be more, no more than two minutes. I came out this evening to add my praise in honoring Ed and George for their long and distinguished service on the board. Membership on this board is true public, and I capitalize public and emphasize public service, unpaid, largely unappreciated, and all in the name of improving the lives of 111,000 public school students in Baltimore County. The service is, in short, almost a higher calling. Neither of these men used the board for partisan or ideological campaigning. In fact, in my five years of experience, neither did any members of what I would call the old board. I may be dumb, but I never knew the politics of my fellow members. If we had red and blue seats, I guess I would have been several aisles over from Ed, awash in blue. And I always suspected that Larry Smith, the most effective school board president in my years, was a Republican, for God's sake. No, what these two you're honoring tonight have is integrity, that and a keen sense of caring and humor. Ed practices both principal P-A-L and principal P-L-E. He came to the board after a long career as a Baltimore County school and civic leader. Speaking of the latter, I was talking Sunday to a former Baltimore County executive at a BSO concert. When I mentioned that I was coming here tonight, he said, quote, "Ed and I clashed mightily on an issue some years ago. I was right and he was wrong. He won. But I never had the sense that he came to his views without thinking long and hard about coming to an honest conclusion," unquote. I saw those honest conclusions many times as I sat over here across the way from Ed. He was not a noisy man, as unfortunately I am. He would sit quietly and throw a long argument on any issue, then simply vote a or nay without delivering a sermon. And even if I disagreed, which I often did, I knew that the a or nay was honest and principled, would that members of our U.S. Congress disagreed with such civility. As for George, what can I say? If they gave out awards for twinkles in the eye, George would have the blue ribbon. George is such a modest man that you probably don't know that he quietly raises thousands of dollars each year for an organization called Buddies, the successor to the old police athletic league in Baltimore City, which of course has come to the fore in the wake of the Freddie Gray unrest. George's thinking, in fact, spans city and county. He knows that the two are quite literally joined at the hip, that the future of one is the future of the other, and that Black Lives Matter in both. George is, of course, a notorious fixer. No problem is too small for George, who has a network of every Greek citizen within two states, on-call 24/7. So here is to the two gentlemen, two gentlemen and gentle men, my life has been so enriched by having worked on this board with both, so have the lives of 111,000 Baltimore County schoolchildren, and I thank both of them. Thank you.
Carver School for the Arts and Technology. I'd like to call up Mrs. Steele, and we'll start there. Mrs. Steele, I'd like to start by asking you to introduce any other staff you may have with you tonight.
I believe we do have one staff member who snuck in through the side, Mr. Mike Laverdy, our carpentry teacher and career and technology education department chair person, but he might be in the other room at this point in time.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, it's with great pleasure that I present this resolution. It reads as follows, "Whereas George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology is one of the, of one of only six schools from Maryland to be honored by the Maryland State Department of Education as a 2016 Maryland Blue Ribbon School. And whereas this Baltimore County High School was selected based on rigorous state requirements for high achievement and dramatic improvement, and George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology was joined in this honor by Hareford High School, which was also named a 2016 Maryland Blue Ribbon School. So that the Baltimore County Public Schools proudly claims one-third of the Maryland schools this year to receive this prestigious honor. And whereas these two schools now join the roster of the 21 other county schools that have earned this rare honor, and these schools collectively represent the potential of every Baltimore County school to ensure that all students graduate globally competitive. And whereas this recognition for George Washington Carver Center for the Arts and Technologies brings attention to the strength of the school's administrative and academic leadership, the quality of education and creativity of its teachers, the enthusiasm and abilities of its students, and the unwavering support the school received from involved parents and community partners. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Education, herewith assembled in regular session on the second day of February in the year 2016, expresses gratitude and sincere appreciation to the entire staff, student body, and technology for their hard work, foresight, vision, and extraordinary efforts in achieving this milestone." So congratulations very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's adopted.
Okay, this time I'd like to call up Principal Gyra, and Mr. Gyra, do you have any other folks from Hareford with you tonight?
Well, I invited the entire leadership team and the entire staff and faculty, but we're working so hard to move to the next level with the national application that they're all home sleeping tonight, so no.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Gyra. I'll again read the resolution. "Whereas Hareford High School is one of only six schools from Maryland to be honored by the Maryland State Department of Education and as a 2016 Maryland Blue Ribbon School. And this Baltimore County High School was selected based on rigorous state requirements for high achievement and dramatic improvement. And whereas Hareford High School was joined in this honor by George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology, which was also named a 2016 Maryland Blue Ribbon School. So that Baltimore County Schools proudly claims one-third of the Maryland schools this year to receive this prestigious honor. These schools, these two schools now join the roster of the 21 other county schools that have earned this rare honor. And these schools collectively represent the potential of every Baltimore County school to ensure that all students graduate globally competitive. And whereas this recognition for Hareford High School brings attention to the strength of the school's administration and academic leadership, the quality, dedication, and creativity of its teachers, the enthusiasm and abilities of its students, and the unwavering support of the, the support the school receives from involved parents and community partners, that now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, herewith assembled in regular session on the second day of February in the year 2016, expresses gratitude and sincere appreciation to the entire staff, student body, and community of Hareford High School for their hard work, foresight, vision, and extra- foresight, vision, and extraordinary efforts in achieving this milestone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution's been adopted.
I just wanted to take this opportunity just to recognize the hard-working staff, faculty, teachers, everyone, parents, students, because it's an honor for me to be the principal of Hareford High School, but it takes an entire school to be able to achieve an award like this. So, thank you so much, appreciate this.
Dr. Dance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. First off, before I begin, I have to say a special thank you to one group of employees who, over the last 11 days, have done some tremendous work, not just for our 175 school centers and programs and all of our offices, but they've also been working very closely with the county in terms of our roads, making sure that they were plowed, making sure that our buildings were maintained. And so if I could ask Pete Dixit and all the members of our facilities, maintenance and operations team, if you could please stand, and would you all help me thank them for their work? And I know we're all clapping for them, and they're not in here, they're in the other room. And Pete's waving like it's homecoming. Congratulations, Pete. And thank you. No, Pete and I were just over at the planning board meeting defending our FY17 county capital budget, but we all know that when the governor issued the state of emergency and we got a historic almost 30 inches of snow, our folks were working directly hand-in-hand with Baltimore County government to make sure that roads were clear and that we actually got all of our students back in the school as safely and as quickly as we could. And I know we lost six instructional days, but safety was our foremost priority. So thank you so much, Pete, to you and your team for the work that the team did. I would remind our community that we've launched our stakeholder satisfaction survey for 2016. It launched yesterday, so throughout the month of February, if you go to bcps.org, you'll be able to take our stakeholder satisfaction survey. Last year, we got roughly 75,000 responses. This year, we're shooting for well over 85,000 responses. Students in grades four through 12, parents, community members, staff, please participate in the survey. If you have multiple roles or you have students in multiple schools, definitely you can complete the survey multiple times. I want to say a special thank you to Mr. Parker, Mr. Montiotis, and to Mr. Bowler. Thank you so much for your service. I know we just recognized you with your resolutions, but Ed Parker is a stand-up guy. When I first got on the board, everyone told me I needed to meet Mr. Parker, not knowing that I had met Mr. Parker through my two rounds of interviews with Mr. Parker. But the work that he had done, not just as a principal and a teacher and administrator, but also as a board member, is to be commended. And Mr. Montiotis, you and Mr. Bowler have given me some immense advice that I truly do appreciate, not just calling you my bosses over a period of time, but also my friends. So I really do appreciate that. To this board, most recently you just spoke and reappointed me to this position, which I have to tell you is most humbling to me. To this board, I've always said that this is a team of 13. No, I'm not a member of the board, but I cannot and we cannot as a team do this work without you. So I do appreciate the opportunity where many times we put our individual philosophical differences aside, because at the end of the day, we have 112,000 kids who are watching us and our actions. So I look forward to the next four years of continuing to work with this board. It is not a thankless position. This is a volunteer board, but they put in well over five to 10, in some cases 15, 20 hours a week, depending on committee assignments and board meetings. So thank you so much for your commitment to me, my commitment is definitely to you into this school system. To our staff, thank you so much. Our principals, we have two of our phenomenal principals here tonight, but we have 175 principals who work day in and day out to make sure that the vision of our school system is carried forward, the blueprint that this board approved is carried forward, and I cannot do this work without the leadership of our principals. But most importantly, to our support staff and our teachers. Every day, our teachers roll up the sleeves, and the work is not just the role of a teacher. So our teachers, our counselors, their social workers, their mom, their dad, their friends with our students, and their advocates for our students. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing. I know I had a conversation over text with Ms. Baden earlier, who's welcoming her grandchild into the world, but thank you so much to our teachers, and I look forward to supporting you over the next several years as well too. To our parents, our community, our elected officials, thank you so much for the support. Everyone knows that we do not fund ourselves as a school system. We get all of our dollars from our county and our state. And so a special thank you to our county executive, to our state legislators. I really do appreciate the support that you give, not just to me, but to this entire school system. And I look forward to seeing our delegation Friday as we talk about updates that are going on within our school system. So I'm very, very excited over the next four years of the work that we have around Blueprint 2.0. Blueprint 2.0 was a plan adopted in 2013 by this board and by our community. It's not, and I said this again, it's not a Dallas-stands plan. Our community said we wanted Blueprint 2.0, right? This board reaffirmed that commitment to that plan in 2015. It talks about a very bold theory of action that students have to be given access to an effective digital learning environment and learn a second language prior to graduation. We cannot waver from that commitment. Philosophically, we can disagree about how we might in fact get to that end result. We can disagree that how we might get there, but the goal has to remain the same, because we have to make sure every single kid get there. But we can do that, though, without being mean, mean-spirited, hateful, or disrespectful to one another. I go by, again, and I talk to kids all the time, and yes, I did talk to students Sunday who said they were happy to go back to school. But we don't, our kids are watching how we treat each other, how we respect each other. So we can still get to our end result without being mean, hurtful, and disrespectful to each other. And that includes quoting inaccurate information. So we went forward with STAT, and I stand by, and I'm a believer of it. And I'm not a believer of giving just laptops to kids, because that's not innovative. Transforming teaching and learning in the classroom where kids take ownership of their own learning and they're working hard to teachers, that's innovative. And that's what I'm proud of that's happening in our classrooms. We're not there yet, but we have a long way to go and we're well on our way there. But we can't get there with inaccurate data that are out there. So let me be clear, STAT does not cost and will not cost $350 million. It will not. We've been very clear, the board held this work session last month. With it, it was the last page of the spreadsheet, we were very upfront in terms of the cost of the initiative. But let me be clear, when we put that budget together, and George Saris and I probably know that budget on the same page with each other, because we spend so much time together, we do a zero-based approach to make sure that every single line item in that budget matches our priorities in Blueprint 2.0. And let me be clear, I am not going to recommend anything to this board or put this school system or this county into an initiative that is not sustainable. But I am clear that I want to make sure that we look at all of our students and give them the access they need to a globally competitive education, and I will stand by that. I will meet with anybody in our community, as you guys know I have met with anybody in our community. But we have to be respectful to each other. We can't inaccurately quote one another, and we can't put lies and innuendos out there, because our kids are looking at us and our community does not deserve that. So I look forward over the next four years continuing to build what I call, and what we all call, Team BCPS. Because any organization is all built on culture, and the culture of an organization has to be built on the sustainability of leadership. And that's why I was very clear early on in the school year that I wanted to stay. That's why my commitment is staying another four years, if not more, to make sure we continue out the work. But no better person can tell us what Team BCPS is than our students. And so that's why our star video for the night really highlights our Team BCPS culture that we've created with our kids telling the story.
Hi, I'm Max, and this is BCPS.
Max and I are both students in the Baltimore County Public School. In my opinion, BCPS is one of the very best public school systems in the whole country.
And here are just a few of the reasons why. All elementary schools are now STAT schools, S-T-A-T, Students and Teachers Accessing Tomorrow. When I first heard about it, all I knew is that everybody was going to get their own computers. What I didn't know is that STAT changes everything, and I mean everything. Now I get to work on my own, with my friends, with the computer, without the computer. I get to make a lot more decisions, which is pretty cool for an elementary school.
And 25 of our elementary schools are passport schools. That means that we get to learn Spanish starting in the fourth grade instead of waiting until middle or high school. ¿Hablas español?
We do. Here's Madison with some more info on what BCPS is all about in our middle schools.
Hi, I'm Madison. BCPS is 175 schools, 111,000 students. It's the 2015 largest school system in the nation, but those are just numbers. What makes BCPS special is the people, like these people, my teachers, and my friends. We're different races, live in different neighborhoods, we have different ideas, but that just makes us more interesting.
When you're my age, people always say, "So Madison, what do you want to be when you grow up?" Well, I have no idea yet, but the more I learn in school, the more I can figure that out. I am learning so much.
And now my middle school competes against other middle schools in after-school sports like track and field, basketball, tennis, and cross-country.
And that's just the beginning. Hey Natalie, tell us more about BCPS.
Sure, Madison, this is my high school, and year after year, it is named one of the best high schools in the nation. In fact, three-quarters, 75% of our high schools are among the best in the nation.
We have 23 Maryland Blue Ribbon Schools and 18 National Blue Ribbon Schools. We are among the nation's largest school districts with one of the highest graduation rates.
Our superintendent has been recognized by the White House as a champion of change and serves on a presidential advisory commission. And one of our teachers was a 2014 National Teacher of the Year. Awards are great, but they celebrate what's already happened. At BCPS, we care about what happens next, too. For me, that means college, career, life. But how well we succeed in life isn't just up to us, it also depends on you. BCPS is all of us and all of you, so join Team BCPS.
Stay in touch with us. Sign up for our e-newsletter.
Volunteer with the school, partner with us, and donate.
I am.
I am.
I am.
I am.
So one additional... One additional person, as I conclude the superintendent's report, whom I'd like to recognize this evening, and I don't see him now, but would Dr. Mark Bedell please stand? And he may be in the other room. And as Mr. Smith is going to get him, for those of you who do not know, Mark Bedell will be leaving us soon to take over as superintendent of schools for Kansas City Public Schools. So I'm extremely proud of Dr. Bedell and the work that he's done with our high schools, but I wanted to publicly recognize him for the work, because in a few days, we're going to be releasing the graduation rate for the class of 2015, and that's because of the work that Dr. Bedell has done. So congratulations, Dr. Bedell. Bedell said, "I'm nervous," and I said, "You should be." So congratulations, Doc. We appreciate it.
...out there in Kansas City, did read the story about him in Kansas...
He got a standing ovation in Kansas City, so congratulations, Mark, we're proud of you.
Thank you, Dr. Dance. Our next agenda item is the chair's report, and I just have some brief comments for this evening. I would like to begin by thanking all those around the county who have contributed input regarding the operating budget, heat policy, and the superintendent's renewal in recent weeks. It is extremely evident that they are very interested and concerned constituents in Baltimore County. Attaining a broad range of perspectives helps the board in making informed decisions in all of those areas. There are many important issues facing the board as we move into 2016. Although there may be some varying thoughts on strategy and tactics, we must keep and prioritize student learning and achievement in all those decisions. We, as board members, will continue to strive to understand how to best support our teachers and administrators, so they may utilize their wonderful talents and skills most effectively. I truly believe that we have a board that consists of individuals who are focused on enhancing the educational opportunities of our students. I would like to thank my fellow board members for their contributions of time, energy, and knowledge. We have board members that bring unique skills and talents to our missions. Finally, I would like to publicly thank Dr. Dance and his staff for the information and responses that have been provided in association with the review of the budget. We hope to work together diligently to achieve what is best for the students, teachers, and administrators of Baltimore County schools. So thank you, those are my comments for tonight. And now we'll move into our student board member comments. Ms. Wallia.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Good evening, Team BCPS. I hope everyone enjoyed their week off. I know students were extremely grateful and happy about their week off of school. It's hard going back to school yesterday after about 10 days off, but I know students were excited to see their friends and teachers. But we're already halfway done with the school year. Seniors, you only have about 14 weeks left in the school year. It's that time of the year when you're receiving college admission letters and planning on where you want to go after high school. As you make these big decisions, always remember that there's someone there to support you. Talk to your teachers, your counselors, assistant principals, or any adult in the building that you trust if you need help. Being a senior myself, I understand what you're going through, so please feel free to email me, I'm a resource for you. It's also the time of the year when we start selecting the next student member of the Board of Education. The applications went out, January 22nd, are due to Ms. Nora Murray by February 26th. These applications are available on the BCPS website under the Student Member of the Board page. My goal for this year is to have every high school nominate a candidate to become the next SMOP. SMOP is a very rewarding position, please, I know it is, and we need someone who will be able to represent the 111,000 students of Baltimore County Public Schools to the best of his or her ability. Every high school has students that are capable to serve in this position, so please encourage your principal to nominate you, a current sophomore or junior. In order to find out more information about the SMOP and the selection process, please check out the BCPS website, as the process has changed this year. I'm visiting more schools in the second half of the year, I've come such scheduled visits in the next couple of months, including one this Thursday. Therefore, if you see me near school, please come and say hi and talk to me. I would be more than happy to talk to you, and I would be more visible in the next few months. Again, I'm your road, so please feel free to email me your thoughts. My email is dwalia@bcps.org, or you can respond to my survey to provide me with your feedback on the school system and/or your specific school. The link to the survey is on the Student Member of the Board webpage on the BCPS website. Lastly, like Dr. Dance said, I also encourage students to respond to the Baltimore County Stakeholder Survey. The survey takes no more than five minutes to complete, so let's work together to better our school system. And thank you, and that concludes the SMOP report for this month.
Thank you, Ms. Wallia. We'll move right along into our public comment section of our agenda. This is one of the opportunities we provide to hear views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens and will take your comments into consideration, even though it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues which are raised. When appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the superintendent for follow-up by his staff. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this board and school system, this is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of redress for complaints. I would like to remind the public that inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. I ask you to observe our timer behind me, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the bell or see that time has expired. At this time, I would like to call up our members of our advisory and stakeholder group. Our first speaker is from the Baltimore County Student Council, Mr. Nick Burton-Prightley. Good evening.
First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Dance on his new contract. I know that unfortunately I will not get to experience the next four years, but I have the utmost confidence that students graduating within the next four years, students enrolled in the school system within the next four years are in very good hands, so congratulations. Baltimore County Student Council has been very busy going into the second half of the year, trying to keep students engaged and trying to keep participation up. Just this past weekend, we sent students to the LEED conference in D... we sent students to the LEED conference in D.C., Deechu being one of them. And I'm sure she'd be happy to tell you more about it if you asked. In fact, she also taught a workshop there to students from around the country and students from various school systems around the world. So I'm sure that was a fantastic experience. And I'm sure she'd be happy to tell you more about it. As Deechu mentioned earlier, the SMOB process is in full swing. We're starting to receive applications for the forum to vote on the next student member. So we're very excited about where that's going to go within the next few months. In addition, we will be sending students to Annapolis this month for our annual advocacy day, where we will discuss with legislators different bills and youth-related issues that are relevant to students in the county and give them a little student input on what's going through Annapolis right now. We will also be having our elections in a few months' time for our officer positions next year. Unfortunately, I have to relinquish my position to my predecessor. Or my successor. Thank you, thank you. But that is something we're looking forward to. And we also have our next General Assembly meeting coming up in March, which is always a very interesting time. So thank you.
Thank you, Nick, very much. Our next speaker for the evening is representing TABCO,
Good evening, Chairman McDaniel, Vice Chairman Gillis, Dr. Dance, members of the Board of Education. I am John Redmond-Palmer. I'm the Vice President of TABCO. And I'm bringing the following brief remarks to you on behalf of Abby Baten, who couldn't be here tonight. I know Abby's watching the board meeting tonight from her son's house, where she is hopefully able to watch it if her granddaughter will allow her to, her new granddaughter. Even though I'm unable... The monumental snowstorm Jonas reminded us that Mother Nature is a much greater power than mere mortals. One storm system wiped out all of our inclement weather days. Yet here we are in another warm-up trend, and forecasters are saying there's a possibility of another storm down the road. We applaud the school system and Dr. Dance for understanding the need for our safety of our children and staff during this unprecedented weather event. People are still digging out from this storm almost a week and a half later. Without the warmer days and some rain, who knows how much longer it would have taken? As we work through the inclement weather policy and rules, we must remember, Mother Nature is the one who is really in charge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is representing the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, Ms. Jacqueline Cade.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations, Dr. Dance. And on behalf of the Special Education Citizens Advisory Council, we thank you for your support of our every child in Baltimore County, including those with special needs. My technology might fail me, so... At our November meeting, we presented recommendations to Dr. Dance concerning special education needs for our students in Baltimore County. And I'm pleased to speak to you about one of the recommendations for elementary school students. I have two children progressing at Woodhome Elementary School. One is a 4th grader with a learning disability. She was diagnosed with several challenges at about the age of 18 months. And through Childfind and Infants and Tilers and the awesome staff at Woodhome, she was able to sort of matriculate out of some of her needs into more specific needs where we can hone in on some of her more specific learning challenges. But the reason why I'm passionate about social skills integration in all of our elementary school curricula is that in that November meeting, every other group who presented on the upper ages, including high school, college and career, and adult, indicated they had experiences with their children having a difficult time integrating into a normal, routine, operating environment without having social skills support. And so we urge you to consider, including the social skills component to every curricula for elementary school students. As stat progresses and children become more engaged with technology, it will be more challenging for them to relate and work together in group settings. And research has shown, I can quote a few articles, but I'm watching my time, that children who engage in group activities and social development, including time at recess, are more able to adapt in school and in non-school-related activities where they have to interact with their peers. They enjoy coming to school more. One of our group members has a 4th grader as well. And she mentioned that her teacher, that her child's teacher reported that her child is disengaged and doesn't seem interested in learning. Her child reported to her that that's because my teacher doesn't understand me. And so, we think that, we strongly believe that helping our teachers to keep their students engaged and to relate to each other and to adults will further them, not only in their education, but in their life skills as a whole. So we thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this recommendation and urge you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cade. Thank you. Our next speaker is representing case,
I realized the other day that there are two of us, my wife and I, at home, and we now own four devices. Two regular computers, one desktop, and a tablet. So I'm not... And that doesn't include the phone. So I'm not sure how much more digitally connected I can be. Good evening, Chairman McDaniel, Vice Chairman Gillis, Dr. Dance. Ralph Waldo Emerson stated that "every institution is the lengthening shadow of a single individual." To that point, I first want to congratulate Dr. Dance on his reappointment. Case looks forward to continuing our unfinished business and providing an excellent education for our 112,000 students. I also want to recognize and thank this board for its work and dedication to the most important process with which you are charged. The selection and retention of a superintendent is a weighty responsibility. And I know that the past five months have not been easy. However, this evening, you have completed your task that will now work to bind the relationships between members and the superintendent. I hope that each of you is proud of your work as you continue moving forward to put students and their education first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Okay, we'll move into our public comment portion of the meeting. And our first speaker for the evening
Good evening. Congratulations, Dr. Dance. I'd like to welcome you back. Glad to have you back. I've tweaked you before about exaggerating a little bit and using terms like "world-class." And I'd like to use it myself if I have your permission. I think you have a world-class motor and a huge amount of energy. And if we're going to implement something, I'd like you on my team, leading that team. So glad to have you back. And so, if we don't get good results with someone like you, I think we would have to look to the board and say, "Hey, how come we didn't get results from this guy?" And so, I look to the board to do two things. One is, if Dr. Dance makes a mistake, to take him aside and say, "Please, don't do that again." He's made a few, and he'll make some more. That's the nature of business. And the other thing is, sometimes to slow him down. He's going to go at warp speed. And sometimes, he needs to be slowed down, I think. And so here, I'm looking for the lawyers here. I think lawyers tend to be quite good at slowing things down. So I believe you, and you, and you. And do we just have three lawyers?
There's plenty more than that.
Four.
Four lawyers. And so, I'd like to tell a story. We talk about cutting-edge technology and 21st century technology. I worked for a company like that. It was one of the first internet grocers. And we started out in Boston, and we expanded to DC before we figured out how to make a profit in Boston. And guess what? We ran out of money. So I'm getting a little bit of deja vu all over again here. And I think we really need to look at stat and see where we can slow it down and measure results. So I'm looking to the board to do that. And then, I just had a comment on one board member I'm still trying to figure out, Ms. Eaton. Sometimes, you have weddings, and they have an announcement about people, the people that came the longest distance to the wedding. And I think you're one of the board members that has the longest drive, if I'm not mistaken. And so particularly the people that represent the Southwest and the Southeast like to sort of congratulate you for making that drive and fighting Beltway traffic. And you remind me, though, of... And so, I mean, it's very important to represent those communities because it's harder for the people to come up here and speak themselves. So one thing I've observed about you, Ms. Eaton, is I think the longest sentence I've heard you say is, "I'm good." And so I'm kind of waiting for you to open, rip off your civilian disguise and do some superhero kind of stuff. And looking forward to your participation on the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Our next speaker is just listed as White. I'm not sure of the first name. I don't know if it's a Mr. White or Mrs. White. All right, we're going to move to our third speaker for the evening, And we just ask if one... Only one person can come up at a time, please. Thank you.
About a few weeks ago, you had other people...
Yeah. We ask that only one person come up at a time. Yes, thank you.
Is that the standard now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. First, I want to congratulate Dr. Dance on his reappointment. My matter is the Milford Mill ban. The teacher was abruptly removed. And I'm just here to speak on it, the parent. We, the proud parents of the band students at Milford Mill Academy, want plain and simple for Mr. Goff to be restored to his position immediately. Our children have been tremendously impacted in a negative way due to the abrupt and unnecessary removal of Mr. Goff. We sent our children on these trips with Mr. Goff, completely aware of where they are going and what they're doing when they're coming back home. And whatever we need to know, we already know. We trust Mr. Goff completely. We trust him because those are his children, too. They're not just our children. He has the best interest in mind. And the only lack of communication we've had is with the administration in the school and the Board of Education because of all of this that's going on. That's the only lack of communication that we've had. We were well informed for all trips, funds, any changes that did or did not occur with the ban. There was nothing Mr. Goff did or didn't do that we weren't aware of. So restore him now. Restore him, and you'll restore our children's foundation. Because without the foundation, there's no building. Our children are hurting. That's all I say.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Marion Moore.
Congratulations, Dr. Dance, on your second term. And good evening, education leaders and community members. My speech tonight is dedicated to my father, Glennie Moore, as he fight for his life while I am fighting for justice and equality in education. My speech is also for all of the victors who have endured unfair adversities due to their race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, age, income, or simply using their freedom of speech and expression. of speech and expression. So tonight, I would like to share a sports analogy with you entitled "The Big Upset." We are currently approaching a critical part of the high school and college basketball seasons when teams have to play with unity despite their individual differences. Now, February is usually the turning point for a lot of basketball teams, and this is the time when players collectively decide whether or not they want to be the champions of their region, state, or division. Also, by this time of the basketball season, teams have celebrated some wins and endured some losses. However, despite the season's losses, the results during March Madness reflects the outcome of hard work, courage, and perseverance. As a former athlete, I've learned that it doesn't matter what your season record is, how many accolades you've received, or how many star players you have on your team. The championship title is not discriminatory. The final title belongs to the individuals or teams who is not, who are not complacent and have a strong desire to win for a greater purpose than themselves. Now, of course, the fans and critics expect the team or individuals with the winning record, or the team who have powerful and talented players to win the big game, just like money, power, connections, and prestige usually help win political positions. But in sports, most people will not look at the athletes on the underdog's team as having the caliber or the capacity to help win the final game or a championship. Moreover, some team members have viewed only their star players as one of the ones who could help win critical games during the regular season, overlooking players who often watch the game from the bench. So can someone who has been called a practice player, a bench warmer, compete on such an elite level? I just know from my experience, when you come to a game wanting to win, you have to get in a competitive mental zone that no one can take you out of. I'm closing. Not even white supremacy. I never would have thought I would be going head-to-head with white supremacy in the education system, but God will put you in game situations in life that will help your team to become believers again, achievers again, and winners again, because freedom, respect, and opportunity belongs to all of us. Not just them, but us, too. Happy Black History Month. Don't forget, hashtag "Compete With Purpose." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Rosen.
Thank you. I was recently talking with my school-aged daughter. She's in elementary school, and she was asking me about speaking at a Board of Education meeting in January. We found the video of the session, and she watched it. She said she wanted to speak, too. When I asked her what she wanted to say, she recalled a recent lesson she had learned about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and she said this: "I want to speak out like Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for people. People need food. We should follow the rules so we can have what we need. Nobody buys fancy things until everybody has what they need. There are lots of people who need food and clothes." I transcribed her words on paper, and at the bottom, she wrote, "Do not buy computers." I asked her if she would prefer more teachers or more computers, and she quickly answered, "More teachers." To be fair, her primary motivation for speaking at a Board of Education meeting also included wanting to speak into a microphone. So in order to preserve her bedtime and everyone's eardrums, I have not allowed her the opportunity to speak tonight. But I want you to know that when you explain to children the trade-offs for their beloved one-to-one tablets, they understand that it is a luxury that we cannot afford. My daughter is not the most altruistic kid out there. She is a regular kid who, when given the option, prefers the company of people to computers. For example, she would be happy using her tablet for a short time every day, or for only one day of the week to allow a rotation in which all classrooms have the same access to the tablets. Like many multi-person-use computers, separate logins could provide individualized learning without the price tag of four-year contracts for tablets for 110,000 students, especially when we don't yet know about learning outcomes any differently than small, traditional classrooms. My daughter referenced Martin Luther King Jr. in our discussion, and it has made me wonder what he would think of the STAT initiative in a school system that has individuals with so many basic needs unmet. I do not believe that giving each child a one-to-one tablet is leveling the playing field. I believe it is depleting our resources in the county schools of what our youngest and most vulnerable children need most: safety, including new buildings, improvements, safe bus transportation, and temperature control, and more meaningful interactions with caring adults. And as my daughter reminded me, these resources could also be used to provide food for those in need. Please consider creative uses of the tablets we have already signed contracts for, and reducing the time our youngest children will spend on these tablets. As a parent and stakeholder, I would like to see quantitative data that shows academic outcomes in relation to STAT before the end of three years as developed with the Johns Hopkins logic model. I am concerned that three years is too long to wait to find out what is or is not working, especially for our youngest learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. Our next speaker is Beverly Grace.
Good evening, Dr. Dance and board members. My name is Beverly Grace, and I'm here to request the immediate reinstatement of Mr. James Goff Sr. to Milford Mill Academy as their band director. It's my belief that he was unfairly and unjustly dismissed in front of the band back in October 2015. This is my second time I've been with the band. First time my children were in the band. Now, my grandson is in the band. He was about three or four when my kids were in the band, and he said then, "I want to play drums for Mr. Goff when I get into high school," and he's living his dream right now. Mr. Goff has built the Milford Mill Academy Band Program from nothing to having nationwide and worldwide notoriety, playing in Bermuda, Africa, several NFL teams here, different parades around the country, doing college tournament bowls. So they're excellent. YouTube them, you'll see what I'm talking about. And each time we've traveled outside of Maryland, we, the parents and the guardians, we received itineraries. We had to sign permission slips, so we knew everything that was going on. We knew when they were leaving, when they were coming back, everything. Sometimes, a lot of these children, they wouldn't have had these opportunities to travel outside. They'd never been to Niagara Falls without going to the, with the band. They've had a lot of different exposures to different things. They would have never gotten it without being in the Milford Mill Academy Band under the direction of Mr. James Goff. And he's done so many other things. He's taken kids up and down the East Coast for college auditions to get into school when their parents couldn't. He's taken money out of his own pockets to feed them. If they come to school hungry, if they go on the trips and their parents forgot to give them money, he feeds them. He makes sure that they are well taken care of. And this is a disservice to the children. They are not happy. A lot of them, their college recommendations haven't been, they're seniors, they haven't been done because he's not there. He's put in 22 years of service at Milford. He has built that program up, and we need to get him back, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. Our next speaker is Chris Zach.
Members of the board, Dr. Dance, I first bring you warm fraternal greetings from the officers of the Lansdowne High School PTSA, its students, and its staff, many of whom are in attendance this evening. I'd like to alert you to a fascinating development that happened in our January meeting. In one week, this group brought together nearly 900 community members for a single cause in the form of a simple petition, which says this: "Build a new high school for the community of Lansdowne." Due to this community activism, the Lansdowne, latest Lansdowne High School PTSA meeting quadrupled in attendance. Last night, Hailthorpe Elementary's PTA had a vote and was unanimously in support of this resolution to build a new high school for Lansdowne. We also have public support from the Lansdowne Improvement Association, Moses Rodriguez, Riverview Improvement Association, Bill Brophy, and the Lansdowne Riverview Recreational Council. In addition, we have individual supporters, students, parents, teachers, who are all here this evening, making sacrifices, coming up from south, you know, where we are, for this reason. They know their convictions are strong. They are looking to the future, and the future is that Lansdowne needs a new high school. For us to obtain a safe building is not a privilege. It's our right. We should have a safe and good school. Last month, some issues that we've had. Last month, we had a large storage closet in our gym condemned due to the discovery of exposed asbestos. Students regularly go into that room. We store equipment and costumes in that room. Dance costumes for the dance troops had to be discarded because they were laden with asbestos from some of the work we did. This is not good. After an incident like this, we're convinced the high school is not going to be safe during a renovation for long-term health. And as a personal thought, my mother's two brothers served in World War II. They both had mesothelioma. It is not nice. Besides the health risks of a five-year renovation that the county is proposing, the building also has poor air ventilation, sinking foundation, broken heating system, recurring leaking pipes, flooding, small classrooms, broken PA, broken sinks where we need sinks, brown drinking water. And finally, it is not ADA compliant throughout the entire building. There is no way for my son, when he has foot problems, to be able to get up to the second floor. That being said, in closing, I would like to say, as the treasurer and as thinking about this, this is not physically responsible to do a $31 million renovation. We request that you build a new school for Lansdowne High. We also would like to have portable window AC units built in as soon as possible as an interim measure while we're building the new school. Finally, I think this is the thing that we need to be able to give our students that globally competitive opportunity that we all strive for here at Baltimore County Public Schools. My children are there. I'm there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Zach. Our next speaker is Kevin Hill. Good evening, Mr. Hill.
Congratulations, Dr. Dance, and everyone else on the board for the great job that you guys do with the difficult tasks of taking care of so many children. I'm also here on behalf of Doctor, I mean, not Doctor, James Goff, the Milford Mill Band Director. I just want to give you a brief history. Both of my children have been involved in the Performing Arts School from middle school on to present. One just recently graduated ironically from Lansdowne High School. She's in Hollins University, majoring in Dance as well as Business. My other son is graduating this year. They both have participated in the All Honors Dance and Band. My son was a recipient of Champions of Courage last year. He wrote an essay about me, and I'd like to pat myself on the back for that, but I cannot take all of that credit. You know, there's many people with many gifts, and when you run across someone like Mr. Goff, you, how can I put this? He's just, has a knack for working with kids. I've watched this man control 100 or more teenage kids, and the respect and joy that they had for him, it's just phenomenal, you know? And the only reason I came out tonight is because if I don't advocate for the kids that are starting ninth grade on, and for my child, and show him that, you know, if someone does a great work with you, stand behind them, you know? Do something to show some appreciation. I'm a little nervous tonight, but, you know, normally, I'm a great speaker. But I'm basically saying that this guy is just, he's a special guy, and he's taken my son for four years on different trips. I've never felt uncomfortable with any place he's taken him. I trust him with my child. And I just want you guys to consider, I know it's a very difficult job you guys take care of, a lot of issues, but in your consideration, I'd like you to think about this moment and this gentleman that you haven't met, but I can tell you that sometimes when, this is not just a regular band, when they're practicing outside and people are driving down the street, they'll stop just to listen to the, you know, the band played. I mean, it was just a phenomenal thing to see, and, you know, I'm trying to put a picture to the situation so you guys can have a better perspective of what happened there. Thank you so much for your time. I'm a little hoarse tonight, but have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Our next speaker is Mary Duvall. Good evening.
I'm a senior at Lansdowne High School, and I'm here because I believe a new school should be built. Our school is over 50 years old, and it's time for a new, safe, and healthy school for all students and staff. We do not have air conditioning as classroom temperatures are double of what the outside temperatures are. This interferes with student learning and serves as a distraction. Our heating system is also very poor. Sitting in class, cold air comes through the heating system. Our plumbing is old and falling apart, leaving filthy water for individuals to drink. Because of the plumbing issues, the school obtains horrendous odors. The school is not accessible to handicapped people as well, as we do not have ramps or elevators for them. Our school is consumed with asbestos in the walls and floors, as well as our school is literally sinking into the lake behind our school. To conclude, Lansdowne High School has always been on the back burner of the schools, as nicer parts of Ballmer County are given stuff on the spot, where we have to wait years to get things we desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker for the evening is Linda Spruill. Good evening.
I'm not good at this, but I'm a parent of, let me get it. Okay. I'm a parent of, my child goes to Milford Mill Academy. I'm here to represent Mr. Goff. He is an excellent band director. He is very supportive. He's like a counselor, father. As a single parent, he really supports kids throughout the trips. He's very responsive, along with the parents who's attending the trips. Since the last one event that they went on in October, it hasn't been the same. Some of the students has really been not themselves, including my son. He's been there for three years. He is a junior. I must say, it wasn't a good process the way Mr. Goff was removed from the band. We only received messages. I think I sent an email to Mr. Dance and your response, but as far as any details, as far as why Mr. Goff was actually removed or was returning, it was not acknowledged to any of the parents or students. And that was unfair to us, as well as Mr. Goff. On my support here for Mr. Goff, I would like for his position to be, for him to return to his position. He's very supportive in his students. He was able to give some students who doesn't travel the opportunity to go to places where no child or student can attend. We've been to Canada. We've been to New York, and there's been full support from the parents, as well as supporting the students and Mr. Goff. He was there always. We approve of Mr. Goff. He's like a father, and I'm here to support for his return, to return back to Milford Mill Academy Band as the director. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Old Business. We have some third readings of policy, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Williams.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to everyone. Before I do so, I would just make a request that the situation involving Mr. James Goff be briefed with the board. I realize this is a personnel matter and that we can't discuss it openly, but the only thing we were told was that it's under investigation, and during a private session, I would like to have further update. At this time, the Board of Education's Policy Review Committee asks that the board accept the committee's recommendation to amend Board Policies 1105,000 and to delete Board Policy 2342. The comments received on these policies were those made during the public comment period of the January 5th meeting. Staff is available. Should board members have any questions?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the Board's Policy Review Committee?
So moved.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Can we have discussion? I'd like to break out Policy 2342 if we...
All right. Well...
1100.
Yeah, and there's a motion to delete Policy 2342 also.
I'm voting for all three.
So we'll break out Policy 2342.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to break out 5,000. I'm on the PRC Committee, and I think there's some errors in what's in front of folks.
All right.
They're very minor, but there's some errors.
We'll vote on the policies one at a time, or discuss them one at a time. Do I have a motion to accept the revisions of Policy 1100?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries for Policy 1100. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the proposal on Policy 5,000?
So moved.
All right, and there's discussion about 5,000?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. There's some antiquated use of commas that have actually kind of been cleaned up elsewhere, and in this particular one, this antiquated series with a comma following, maybe the next-to-last item in a series, that's old style, and we've changed that in other policies. And that's specifically in the comments about equitable, comma, safer, comma. Well, that comma shouldn't be there. F under Business, it says Business, there's a comma there. That doesn't belong there. And under G, removal of comma after the word stakeholders. And that's pretty much what we discussed in our meetings, and I think just staff, however thoughtful and however diligent, and however attentive, I think it just got past them.
All right. Since these are grammatical changes, can we agree to accept the proposals with the grammatical changes as proposed by Mr. Vurch?
Yes, we can.
All right. All in favor of accepting the changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Is that a change?
All right, now, can I have a motion to accept the, to delete Policy 2342?
So moved.
All right, now, the discussion?
Yeah, I thought that the reason for deleting Policy 2342 was that it was duplicative of, I believe it was Policy 1210. Is that right, Ms. Williams?
I believe that's correct. Staff is here if you want to, if staff wants to...
I think it would be wise of us to have the PRC review Policy 1210 prior to the deletion of Policy 2342, and it could actually be done simultaneously when we review and accept 1210. Then, at that time, we could delete Policy 2342. I would like to offer that as a motion, to have the PRC review Policy 1210 prior to the deletion of Policy 2342.
I believe we have reviewed Policy 1210.
When was that reviewed? Do we have a date on when it was reviewed?
It was at one of the PRC's meeting.
So, Anne, are you saying you want the entire board to review that before? Because we send these out, but PRC does review whatever's being deleted.
And it was at the same PRC meeting.
It's a regular process for Policy 1210.
Right, and it was.
At that same meeting.
Was that this year or just recently? I don't, I'm not aware of it.
It was January of this year.
Okay, all right, then I withdraw.
Thanks.
All right, then, let's, we have a motion. All in favor of moving forward the deletion of Policy 2342, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, our next agenda item is reviewing the proposed FY '17 operating budget. The superintendent's proposed FY '27 operating budget was introduced to the board on January 5th, 2016. A public hearing was held on January 12th, 2016. The public provided the board with many valuable comments and perspectives on how and why we as a school system allocate and spend the budget. The board then held a public work session on January 19th, 2016, at which time a comprehensive report was provided by staff, and substantial discussion took place along with several votes detailing the board's direction with the budget. During and also after the work session, board members have submitted several questions and have received responses from staff. This has been a most comprehensive budget submission by the superintendent and provides the necessary components for BCPS to continue the work as outlined in Blueprint 2.0. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Dance and the SEF for their work on this inclusive budget, and also for their time and effort to help each board member understand the many components that have developed this final version of the 2017 operating budget. As we move forward to vote on the budget, let us keep in mind that we are building our future and investing in our most precious asset, the students of Baltimore County Public Schools. Once approved by the board, the budget will be forwarded to the county executive on or before March 1st, 2016, as required by law. So now I turn it over to Ms. Saris, Mr. Saris, to present the item to the board.
Uh, good evening. We made, uh, three changes to the budget in keeping with the board's, uh, recommendations from the work session, which were to add $10 million to one-time expenditures for school air conditioning, and to add the position of an internal auditor and an administrative assistant to the, um, board's, uh, office staff. And the total, uh, so that the general fund budget, uh, has changed by $10,182,214. All of the, uh, other funds that make up the budget, uh, special revenue, which are grants, debt service, enterprise fund, which is food and nutrition services, the internal service workers' compensation fund, and the capital project fund, all remain unchanged. So those three items, three line items, uh, only affected the general fund portion of the budget, um, which increased from, uh, 1,400, 1 billion, excuse me, 456,386,134 dollars to 1,466,568,348 dollars.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve Exhibit M1?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there some discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the budget goes to the county executive at this point?
Uh, once approved, we will, um, take all this information, create another publication, and, uh, no later than March 1st, submit that to the county executive.
And the county, the county executive, uh, has the prerogative of deleting items and then sending it away? In other words, it doesn't come back to us. If the county executive wants to delete an item, it's deleted and then goes to the county council. Is that the process?
The executive can add or delete items to the budget and then would not come back to the board, uh, for any input, but rather send it on to the, to the council.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Miller?
Yes, hi, Mr. Saris. Um, there's been a lot of discussion, not only among board members regarding stat and the sustainability of stat, but from the public as well. Can you tell me, is stat sustainable in the long run?
Well, um, it is, and I answered that question in writing, so what I, I might prefer to do is just read back my answer so that it's clear that if all the board members have not heard it, that, um, that everybody is getting, uh, the same information. Uh, BCPS is fiscally dependent on local, state, and federal funding, as is every Maryland local education agency except Baltimore City. In fact, BCPS is a component unit of county government and has no autonomous authority to generate revenue, incur debt, or appropriate and use reserves. Local county funding is the largest and most flexible resource for public education in our county. Every significant instructional program, labor agreement, or capital project represents a major fiscal commitment for Baltimore County Public Schools and Baltimore County Government and requires BCPS to partner with county government before undertaking such long-term obligations. The county government supports stat. It has funded stat for two consecutive years. Therefore, in my opinion, yes, it is sustainable.
And as part of the basis of that answer, you also discussed the, um, taking of funds out of the general fund as well.
Right. I, the last sentence is, "I believe that the use of fund balance as a revenue source will continue within the range of 13 to 19 million dollars annually." This occurred before the implementation of stat and will, and I project it will continue.
Thank you. Um, when the general fund surplus is appropriated, what requirements exist for how that money is to be spent? Does it have to go into certain budget subcategories?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, so monies go in, um, there's no requirements on the subcategories, and when they're appropriated, it's more like a slush fund. It can be used in any way.
Not once it's appropriated into our budget. Once, none of our revenues are matched to a specific expenditure. So we receive $700 million in county money and $600 million in state money, and all of those revenues essentially fund a small part or pro-rata portion of every project. So there's no specific direction, other than with one-time expenditures, which are county-funded.
So, um, so your basis for saying that stat is sustainable in the long run is based on the availability of those surplus funds and also the support for the program from our county executive and county council?
I'm saying all sources of revenue are used for stat, except in this year, I think, uh, grant funding, I don't believe there's a specific portion of grant, federal grant or state grant funding that's allocated to stat.
Now, these lease contracts for the devices are four-year terms, and since our county executive, executive will be gone in 2018, that will only, that will occur only one year into these contracts. Is that right?
What will occur? The departure of the county executive?
The current county executive will occur only one year into those four-year lease agreements.
Well, as I said, the county executive and the county have funded two years of stat, and we will be requesting two more funding years, both of which will occur prior to his departure.
So long-term really is not long-term. When you describe that, we're only talking a year into this new lease. That's not really a long-term picture regarding sustainability.
Well, you gotta remember that once a lease is undertaken, you know, all of the leases before have a run-out period, so it's, for instance, the lease that's approved this year will continue, uh, '17, '18, '19, and '20. I don't know if that's your question, answer or not.
What I'm getting at is that the support on the county level, we don't really know what's going to happen after we get, after 2018.
I think what would help Ms. Miller's question is, the way we have worked with county government, it will actually be sustained through maintenance of effort. So it is sustainable if it's, if it's actually calculated within maintenance of effort. So that, of course, would be in our...
That is the case.
Right.
That would be the case, then.
Correct.
Okay. Can you tell me, with the ever, ever-increasing focus on technology currently, uh, what portion of the funding for stat in this proposal specifically addresses issues of safety and technology? So things such as cyber safety, the ergonomics, the medical and health concerns that some people have brought up, the effects of extended screen time, protecting student data, et cetera?
Protecting student data and security are ongoing, uh, operations of the Department of Technology that are separate from the stat budget. Um, in, uh, the ergonomic aspects that have been discussed are not, uh, to my knowledge, incorporated in the fiscal range of this program.
So I think, Ms. Miller, what you're asking more so is our approach, not necessarily our budget, but our approach to how we're addressing cybersecurity, student safety, and other, um, health factors of which you're discussing, which I, I, we can definitely answer that for. I don't know if it's a budget discussion that you want.
Well, it would be budget, because it would have to be supported in the budget.
But those are, are internal operations of things we would do within current funds that we may not necessarily be requesting additional funds for. So, for example, we can talk to you about what we do around common sense media, making sure that we teach our students, you know, responsible use, what we're doing in terms of, you know, the balance between screen time and, and things that are occurring in classrooms. I don't, and I know Mr. Saris is not the appropriate one for it. Um, we can definitely set up a time to where we address the board on how we are approaching those, but it's not, in my, my humble opinion, it's not a budget where we're requesting new dollars to do that work.
Well, that's what my question was. Is there any sort of appropriation being given to those kind of things in this proposal?
So, in this proposal, we're not requesting any new funding for that. Um, within our current budgets that we have, either through academics, meaning innovative learning, or through informational technology, we have systems in place to where we address students' responsible use and actually work in terms of professional development around appropriate uses and not appropriate uses of devices.
Okay. Um, that is a, a major concern of mine, and I, I would like to actually make a motion regarding that, um, it's not necessarily a budget item, like you say, but it, it affects how I would address other budget items.
We, we currently have a motion on the floor that we need to resolve, or you can amend the motion that's currently on the floor.
Um, actually, and I, I'm not, I'm not sure what the Robert's Rules of Order would be on this, but, um, I'm asking that this motion come before that one, because it would impact it.
Well, we have a motion that's been seconded. We have to resolve that motion before we take on another motion.
Okay, so you're saying the, the, the vote on the entire budget would come first?
Right, unless...
Or any motion to amend or, or anything else.
Well, you can amend the mo, you can move to amend the current motion to accept items, uh, I, accept Exhibit M1. You can move, that, that motion is on the floor.
Okay, then I make a motion to amend the current motion to include that the board would direct, uh, the following changes to the stat program. Uh, the first one would be requiring a three, a three-year pilot for the lighthouse programs before any expansion can occur, and that the lighthouse pilot programs would stay as currently defined. Uh, and the second element would be that, uh, in the element, on the elementary school level, where the devices are in grades one to three, next year that would move up with the current, the students that currently have them into grades two and four.
Right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions regarding the amendment? Or if not, I would ask Ms. Decker to call. Now, also, I'm going to remind that Ms. Walia does not vote on these budget issues, but for clarity, I'm going to ask Ms. Decker to call the roll on the amended motion.
Yeah, I know. I'm quite understanding.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, actually, the Wi-Fi is down, and so I don't have access to email or the board docs, um, and, uh, I believe there's...
I have the Wi-Fi for this.
Have you tried Firefox?
I, I didn't have it either.
Well, um, Mr. Yelf...
Okay. So my, my point is that, uh, Ms. Miller had, uh, had a table that talks about the changes to stat. Um, if, if you could show that, because I don't, I don't have the spreadsheet there.
I can't show it. I mean, I have it in here, but nobody's been able to see it, you know, and I can't, I haven't been able to email.
Ms. Miller, do you mind if, uh, Mr. Yelfelder, he had a question?
Sure.
And we'll come back to you.
Yeah, um, Ms. Miller, I don't understand what you're, what you're saying. Um, what I do understand is that, that apparently, um, you want to amend the motion to put this budget forward to the county executive by changing specific programs that are within the budget?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure, um, I, I'm, I'm not sure how you go about doing that. That, um, it just doesn't make any sense to me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Cossey, did you have a que, question?
Well, I was thinking, uh, this is down, and I was going to have it printed out. I had the table with me, but I thought you had it, the table with you. Uh, to make it more clear to the fellow board members, that at the, uh, budget workshop that we had at the last meeting, there were a number of board members that wanted to slow down stat until we had concrete data showing that it was effective for our students, because the current, uh, data that we have showing the difference between lighthouse schools in their park testing and non-lighthouse schools, which, um, shows that the lighthouse schools did not perform as well. That's the only metrics that we have. Um, so it would be prudent to not continue to spend all of this money in this, you know, dramatic fashion until we get some actual results, not just qualitative, they're engaged, uh, we think they like it, um, we get little letters that say they want to keep them and all that, and that's wonderful. So there are ways that we can slow it down in terms of keeping the lighthouse schools intact, but not moving it forward into all of the other schools at the pace that was requested by Dr. Dance.
So that would address that, the first point, which is, uh, requiring a three-year pilot. Uh, and the second point, more goes to the discussion about, uh, how the focus should really be on getting the devices on the high school level and not so much with the youngest grades. So in moving the devices up with the kids that currently have them in grades one to three, we'd move them up next year to grades two to four. So the motion then would be to adjust the budget accordingly to these changes.
All right. Um, again, Mr. Stewart, did you have a question or...
I guess, two things. In that, in that instance, those teachers and instructors who were at those levels will no longer be then using tablets or anything else going forward.
Well, the teachers would still have them. All the teachers have them.
But they would, their students would stop having them, in other words.
Um, for grade, for kid, for kindergarten, first grade.
Well, I, I guess my comment would be more of a macro one, which is that although I might be open to discussion about how best to modify the rollout, to ensure that we are monitoring progress in a way, um, that's efficacious and maybe even allowing for another year of the study from Johns Hopkins, the environment in which we're in, it's, we only have one proposal to do so, and I'm not sure that I can sign on to that, so maybe there needs to be a larger discussion about what it should look like.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
So this is discussion time, right?
Yes.
Okay. So at one point, I was pretty quiet, but I've got some things to say right now. So I don't feel it's appropriate to legislate instruction in this manner. Um, I was definitely one of the people that said we needed to slow down, but I think that it, that would be a detriment to our teachers. I was taking the teachers, uh, taking the students', um, opinions into con... I was taking the teachers -- taking the students' opinions into consideration, and we did get little letters from the students, yes, but I'm going to actually read one of these little letters. "I know you're curious about the use of STAT as a student. As a student, I would like to contribute to your discussion. I think that STAT is important for us as the learners. For example, I use dictionary.com to spell 'example.' I was never good at spelling. I personally like using the devices for videos, learning videos. I feel that being able to go into Brain Pop and pause to take notes affects my grades in a more positive way than if I were to sit on the rug and watch. I can't keep up. Please take my ideas into consideration." So I had been taking a lot of the students into consideration, and that's why I thought it would be okay to maybe slow down even in the high school level, kindergarten level, first grade level. And then I thought, on a macro level, that the teachers are affected. And so I reached out to a handful of teachers within the last 48 hours and got a lot of responses, and I'm going to read a few of them. "The first-grade students find the devices very motivating," and these are the students that we would be taking devices away from in the future with this proposal. "When they use them, they are so wrapped up in their tasks. Dreambox is super helpful with developing their individual math skills. They're able to work at their own level and pacing. Furthermore, our instruction focuses on activities that don't require use of the devices as well." Another teacher, this is a second-grade teacher. "I know the students find the devices engaging and motivating. Students are working at their own pace and level, and the children can use it for research and listen to stories to build reading fluency and comprehension. However, daily instruction also focuses on activities that do not use the device. The children are busy reading and developing communication skills and interacting with others, which is a very important skill." So back to my initial point, is that I don't feel it's appropriate to legislate instruction this way. So as the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, I am requesting that we get monthly updates on STAT, not just STAT but lighthouse. I think Mr. Bowler would be happy about that, but lighthouse schools as well. I'd like to get a better understanding as a member of this board and as a parent, as a member of the community, the financial implications, the curriculum rollout, safety and security, as Ms. Miller mentioned. I'd like to also get some suggestions and input from other board members within the Curriculum Committee, and so we can find improvements and ways to move forward with STAT. So it is all-encompassing for the county. And as a reminder to the public, the Curriculum Committee meetings are open to the public. So that was just my.
Mr. Collins. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I think Marisol makes a lot of very good points, but I think Ann has a basic point as well. Of course, I advocated last year that we create another 15 schools to have a control group and not expand STAT, not take it from anyone who had it, but to create another smaller group, but instead we went completely and we went off the rails, I believe, by moving too quickly. I'm completely supportive of technology as part of our instructional program, and I had a very long and interesting conversation with Verlita just yesterday, as a matter of fact, on the subject, and it was also illuminating, you know, but it's just one illustration of the fact that I believe we're moving too quickly. Earlier, typical of my fashion and out of order, during the Contracts Committee meeting, I asked if we know how much time even our students are spending on an average day or any measure of time that they're spending, and no one in the audience of our staff could give me an answer. I mean, we don't even know how much screen time our students are spending on an average. There was no even -- not even a hazard of a guess of, in a six-and-a-half-hour school day, of a range. There was no idea or no willingness to express an idea, at least. And again, that's not a criticism of our staff. I think our staff is wonderful, dedicated and hardworking, but I think it's just illustrative of we're moving too quickly, and I think it has budgetary implications because the odds are we're wasting a whole lot of money, but I don't know that because we just don't have enough information about STAT. So I -- while I'm not sure that Ann's proposal is necessarily the best way to slow down the STAT program, it would be a way of getting a much more accurate picture of what's going on. So I'm really conflicted here, but I'm just, as I was last year, as I continue to be, not opposed in any way, but just deeply concerned about the rapidity, rather, the speed with which we're implementing this. I think we're going way too fast, and I've said that many times.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Gillis, you had a question?
Thank you. I'd like to just say that the process that we use to address issues like this is usually, and in this instance, has been a three-step process. We had a public hearing. We vetted this same issue exhaustively at our last meeting. We had motion after motion, these same issues, and this meeting today was really to finalize the budget, which we discussed and voted on amendments to at the last meeting, and to revisit them again, and to cause there to be potential delay in delivery of the budget, which has been fully discussed and voted upon at the last meeting, seems to me to miss the point of our process, and for that reason, I call the question.
All right, there's been a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, I didn't get a chance to make my comments.
Well, he called for the question. So there's been discussion. He's calling for the question. It's been seconded. We have to vote on whether -- we're going to vote on that at this time.
So we're going to vote on whether we're going to vote?
Right.
Or whether -- so if we vote not to vote, then we can have more discussion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Decker, would you call the roll? Now, we have a motion to call for the question at this time.
Ms. Causey?
No.
Mr. Collins?
No. This is a very dangerous path to go down, colleagues. Be careful what you wish for.
Ms. Eaton?
No.
Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
No.
Mr. Yoffelder?
Yes.
Mr. Birch?
Nay.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
So if there's further discussion, Ms. Causey.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Gillis, to your point of we exhaustively discussed this at the last meeting, that's true that we did have discussion about it, but we, as a board, could see that there were board members that did want to slow down STAT, and then we had the blizzard, which prohibited any additional meetings, networks are down, and so forth, in terms of having additional conversations. So as everyone dug out and the board members were able to have discussions, and we also got in another slew of community input based on that budget workshop and hearing more fully the details in the program. So I do think it's valid to have a discussion now. And I was also listening when Senator Collins was asking Ms. Waite about the time that the students spend on the devices, and one of her things is saying that she's never seen them on it, definitely not half the day. They can't give a ballpark, and then Mr. Embrioli chimed in, that time is limited, it's not the whole time. So I might proffer that we would, not the lighthouse schools, leave the lighthouse schools moving forward as they are, but to have either a two-to-one or three-to-one ratio of the devices in the other grades that were going to have them as they moved forward as a way to understand -- to do two things, really. To limit the funds that we are obligating ourselves to for four more years. Each new device has a four-year lease that comes with it. But also to see if there's another alternative to that, to a one-to-one, that could also provide benefits to our students, where they have access to technology for those teachers that have incorporated, and I understand your point, Marisol, about the teachers that have used the devices and they've incorporated them into their lessons, to still have that available. But as we heard Senator Collins and I and those other people that were in the room for the Contracts Committee meeting, that they're not using them all day. So it's a very expensive device, so this is a way that we could both carry forward what the teachers have done, but not add to the expense until we start to see some results and find out what is actually effective, necessary for our students, but also to carry forward. Because one of the things that we continue to hear is all of the other needs that our community has, and this is literally taking money away from many, many other areas. It's the only way it fits into the maintenance of effort that Dr. Dallas was talking about, is to take it away from other programs, the transportation, the special needs, you know, so on and so forth. So that's what I would -- that's my point of discussion, is that it is a way to slow it down. It doesn't take it out of the hands of anyone that's used it in terms of the teachers and the students, but it does slow it down.
Mr. Collins?
I really want to vote for Ann's amendment because I feel so strongly about slowing it down, and as a matter of fact, I told Ann that I would, and I'm very careful, having spent a career having people ask me to promise to vote a particular way when I was in the legislature, and it's very dangerous when you commit your vote, and it's really a very serious sin to not keep your word. But Ann, I'm going to publicly say to you tonight, I'm not going to keep my word to you to vote for your amendment because my seatmate, Marisol, made a powerful argument. I think it's clear that there are some members, I don't think it's the majority, that there are some members on the board that are really concerned about the speed of the rollout of STAT. I know we've all conveyed it personally to the superintendent. I know I have, and I know you have. We've both had meetings publicly, and I've said it for the last couple of years, and I say everything about 10 or 15 times a meeting, so I'm sure one's either turned me off completely or heard me say it. But we really shouldn't be using the budget. I mean, I'm ready to vote on the budget. I think the attempt to cut off debate was outrageous, and we should not ever do that. We should never attempt to cut each other off, and I hope you will, those of you who voted for that, will not do it again. But that is a personal point of view, which I've had and expressed very clearly to the Chair from time to time, regardless of who he was when they attempted to do that to me when I was saying something in one of our meetings here. But I am prepared to vote on this budget, vote for this budget. We did add three, what I thought were very important amendments. Marisol's, of course, for the $10 million, was the big surprise one, but the other two for additional employees in two key areas of great need, I think, were also very important, and we added those. So while I'm deeply sympathetic to slowing down STAT, I think the idea you have, Ann, is very worthy of a great deal of examination, and I think we should ask the Curriculum Committee to examine it, and we should think we should ask Dr. Dance to examine it, and I know his passion of moving forward as quickly and rapidly as possible, but, and, you know, that's my passion, too. I want the children to have this accessibility, but I just am deeply concerned that we don't know what the heck we're doing and we're too impatient to wait for some compelling data, which is why I keep saying the same thing over and over again. But I am ready to vote on the budget, so I hope that we can do that pretty soon.
Mr. Yoffelder?
You know, this is a very complex situation relative to technology. I think this week, the President committed $4 billion for technology. I want to quote a line, it was in the New York Times article last year. "If you don't embrace technology today, you will next year." And I think what it tells us is that technology and the method in which we teach our kids is moving, and technology moves rapidly, very rapidly. But there's another side to this, and even when I heard the folks from Hopkins, there's another side to this, that I don't think that you will be able to evaluate the lighthouse schools to other schools, and that's the behavior. And I've talked to several principals who have pointed out to me that there's a dramatic change in the behavior of the children who have their devices. And at the same time, to deny the rest of the kids this opportunity to further their education, I think is wrong. I don't believe that the method that you want to use by creating some additional legs to the budget process is the way to go. If we want to discuss this and examine this, I think we ought to take the time to really understand what technology is bringing to us. And when I hear slowdown, I don't know what the definition of slowdown is. Is it six months, one month, six years, four years? And, you know, no one has anything definitive about the word slowdown.
Want me to tell you, David?
Don't interrupt me.
I can tell you.
I know you know everything, so I'm sure you can tell me. Anyway, I think we ought to proceed ahead with either forwarding the budget or not forwarding the budget, and then I also think that we ought to put on the agenda for some discussion. Is STAT moving too fast, too slow? What are the benefits? And their benefits, as I said, are more than just comparing the lighthouse schools to schools who do not have devices and so forth. There's other factors, a lot of intrinsic values that we have to recognize. It's not a simple task. It's a difficult task. I would like to proceed ahead with the budget.
Ms. Miller?
We're talking about a $1.8 billion budget, and I think it warrants us spending a little bit of time here. And I, too, have an answer to what is slowdown. Slowdown means wait until we have evidence that it makes sense to move forward. Now, we don't get any results from Johns Hopkins until year three, so my motion to require a three-year pilot is in line with that. Your other point, Mr. Yoffelder, about depriving some students, because we don't have results, we can't really say who's getting deprived and who's not. Are we depriving the kids by giving it to them, or are we depriving the kids by not giving it to them? We don't know the answer to that yet, so we can't use that as a rationale for moving I would amend my motion to eliminate the second.
We have to vote on the original. We haven't voted on your original amendment first before we change it again.
But I can amend my own motion, correct?
No.
Can she withdraw?
She can withdraw the motion, I guess, right?
As long as the second agrees to the friendly amendment, you can amend the amendment as long as the second agrees to it.
Let's hear it.
I would amend it to take away that second point, which was to move the devices up by a grade and just have the motion be to require a three-year pilot.
Can I ask a question?
Well, we need a second first.
Second.
Okay, now, is there a discussion about the amendment?
Can someone -- so the process as it stands is there's a two-year pilot, and it has to come back to the board after the second year for approval anyway, for additional fund?
Not to my knowledge. We have lighthouse schools and we have all other schools in a planned stage, so that I don't think.
So, George, let me help you out with this one. If I'm hearing the question correctly, if the board were to approve the budget as is currently proposed, any additional schools added or grades added would have to come back to this board for further approval because it would be linked to budget. So if the board approves this budget and it's funded by the county, this will be for the 16, 17 school year. Anything we would want to do or would like to do for 17, 18 would come back to this board for approval. Board for approval, because it would require additional dollars.
So if we get the Johns Hopkins report and it's not the way the Board wants to see it, wants it to look like, and the results don't, aren't what we want to see, we can...
We can change it next year.
We can change next year.
Or modify.
Or modify, right.
Once, if the Board would approve the budget as it is tonight, again, I'm just trying to understand the questions that are on the table. If the Board approves the budget as it is tonight, we're going to forward it to the County Executive. He then has the autonomy to either add to the budget or cut from it.
I mean, moving forward, years moving forward.
For '17, absolutely. For '17, '18 going forward, if the Board wanted to go in whatever direction, whether add to or whatever, they would have that autonomy, yes, because I'd have to bring a budget proposal back to this Board for approval.
I have a question for Dr. Dance. So if we approve the budget tonight as it stands, but as a Board we were able to come to at another time to move things along, as they say, if the Board did decide that we wanted to slow STAT by having two to one in non-Lighthouse Schools as opposed to one to one, keeping the Lighthouse Schools the same, is there an opportunity to do that before the final budget is approved in the County Council and then it comes back to us in May?
So I would probably answer that in a different way, Ms. Causey. If the Board wanted to go anything other than one to one, the Board needed to look at its strategic plan. And if the Board wanted to alter its strategic plan, which is what I dropped the budgets based on, then that would be the direction of the budgets based on the strategic plan. But, and the Board can look at the strategic plan at any moment. But my request going forward with it being a one-to-one environment for grades one through 12 are based on the current strategic plan that's written. If you're asking me in terms of the budget, once it's sent over to the County Executive, it does not come back to this Board until it goes through Council.
But Dallas, am I correct? If subsequently, just before next school year, if the Board changed its policy, did what you said, we already have the budget, but that would just mean a heck of a lot of money's left over at the end of the fiscal year. That pot of unspent money. If we all of a sudden magically change the strategic plan and said, okay...
So let me be clear, I don't think the Board's going to have an extra pot of money left over.
No, what I'm saying, no, I'm trying to make it be funny. If the Board changed...
I'm trying to understand it.
If the Board changed STAT for the next school year after the budget was approved, all that money would be coming into the pot that George was talking about from the County. Isn't that right, George?
No, sir. You're asking for 14 and a half million for STAT. If the Board decides to say they're not doing that, the Board, we would not be able then to say, we're going to reallocate that money elsewhere. We're sending it over to the County under a line item for STAT.
Well, I thought George said all the money comes...
But in our County request, we're asking for additional funding. If you go back to the work session document that we put in front of you, sort of with all the new requests, that specifically 14 and a half is asking just for STAT. If the Board decides...
Oh, no, we're going to spend at least 14 and a half on STAT, but we might not spend the whole amount on STAT. I mean, this is not likely to occur, but I'm just trying to understand, because I was, you know, I was interested in what George said about all the money comes in from the state and from the County, and it doesn't get, come in for...
True, in terms of revenue source, but when we're asking for the County to fund, we're going to be asking the fund specifically for a line item. So just because the money's in our general fund, we can't just move money around with that. We're asking the County special permission for an X amount of dollars for a specific initiative.
I understand that. But if it wasn't spent for some reason, then at the end of the fiscal year, where's it go?
If we don't spend our allocated budget within the fiscal year, it goes to our fund balance, but that still has to be reallocated to us through the County. So even though it's in our fund balance, doesn't mean we can spend it. The County would have to give us permission, yes.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, okay.
Mr. Vurch? Mr. Vurch has a question.
Just to finish here, there is a process by which the Board can ask the County to reallocate funds, and it was done last year, and it's been done before. So there is a process to reallocate funds. If the Board decided to change the strategy so that we don't have all the schools exactly like the Lighthouse Schools, then we could reallocate the funds, for instance, for instructional teachers or special ed teachers or so forth. We could redirect those funds.
I think what Ms. Causey's talking about, there have been times we've gone back to the County with a supplemental appropriation based on something that may have come up. For example, if we've received a grant that we have to get County Council approval, we've gone as a supplemental appropriation. That is not necessarily guaranteed, but we are asking for their permission to basically move money throughout the budget at that point, yes.
Mr. Vurch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I have a question, and then I perhaps have a suggestion as how we ought to proceed. As I heard it just a few moments ago, we do have Hopkins that will be reporting back to us with some information at some date. I see the, I see the current superintendent nodding. And what date is that?
I don't have the, I'm looking at you now. Dr. Brenner, we can put that in this week's update to the Board.
I mean, is it like within 12 months? Is it within...
Oh, yes, sir.
Fine, fine, excellent. Here's where I'm going with this. And this is not my quote. You know, truth is what you can verify, what you can validate, what you can assimilate. And if you can't verify, validate, or assimilate, then it's not truth, it's false. That's not my quote, it's, I think, William James. We're really stuck in the middle right now with STAT. And we have our leases, we have the budget before us. My sense is, if there was a means by which the continued process of STAT was to be revisited based on the Hopkins information, because we can't assume that the Hopkins information, assuming it is valid, assuming that it is credible, it is honest, it was done, you know, correctly, we can't assume that it's going to say STAT is bad or that STAT is good.
That's right.
Although I do want to thank all the parents and all the teachers and with some other Board members. I spent, you know, better part of three hours last week with 15 teachers, some of whom are retired, some of whom are still active in our system, all of whom love the system but want, you know, only the best for students, and STAT causes a great concern. So, that being said, perhaps the way to proceed is twofold. One, the budget's approved. Secondly, David Ylfelder, back from Hawaii, has suggested that we actually set aside a time to review and discuss STAT, perhaps in advance of Hopkins reporting to us what they've been able to measure or not measure with regard to STAT. We then digest that, we then meet to discuss the results of that. That then tells us where to go in the future with regard to STAT. We then have information, and William James, who's been dead for 110 years, would be 105 years, would be proud that we're proceeding in this fashion, because we're attempting to validate what is true and what is not, and we're trying to do it in a way that's fiscally responsible. Because, let's face it, you don't rent a car to park it in the garage. So if kids, and our Chief Academic Officer can't tell us how much time kids are spending with these devices, I suspect they're picking and choosing between the different mediums, but I don't know, because I'm not conducting the Hopkins analysis. So, that being said, if we're going to put this money into this, we want the devices to be used in a helpful, productive, educational way. That's how I suggest we proceed. Now, whether that means these other amendments out there have to be voted on and disapproved, I'm suggesting this is a way to get us through, get our budget to what it has to get to this year, and then make sure that we are the healthily skeptical Board that we were sent here to be, and then we're proceeding in a very efficacious way.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
We don't have to vote on the budget today, or we don't have to approve it today. We've got another meeting this month. It doesn't have to be approved until the end of the month, is that correct?
That's correct, before March 1st.
So that's another option, is a slight delay to hash out some of these issues. I think that we've all expressed a lot of concerns about the implementation of STAT, the lack of, you know, any evidence, the speed, the amount of money, the way it ties us in, and we're not going to be able to roll it back easily. So the other option is to vote against the budget today, and we can vote on it again at the next meeting.
Is there any further discussion?
I have one quick question for Mr. Saris. Is that okay?
Yes.
Mr. Saris, in the budget County, I mean, the Board-proposed budget, it has the Auditor and Administrative Assistant and the $10 million for school air conditioning, and the benefits for the two positions in its own column. But then, as I add it up, it does fit into the total of all funds, so that we're not, so those three things are not outside of what we're expecting to get from revenues. So revenues are matching expenses. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so with revenues matching expenses, there's no reason that we would expect the County or the County Executive to have to cut those three things that we added, because they do fit within the budget?
Well, we're asking, yeah, we're asking, the other side of this equation is on the preceding page. If you see under Revenue, Local, superscript 1, that $10.2 million is being requested from County Funding. So, you know, we don't know whether they're, they are going to have those dollars available or not, so...
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have the, I would ask, Ms. Decker, could you read the amended motion back?
Well, amended, it's just a three-year pilot. Decker, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Would, Ms. Miller, if I could ask you to restate it just...
A three-year pilot shall be required for all Lighthouse Programs before expansion can occur.
All right, and, Ms. Causey, you second that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. I would ask Ms. Decker to call the roll. We're voting on the amendment at this time to...
Ms. Causey? Yes.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Gillis?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
No.
Mr. Ylfelder?
No.
Mr. Vurch?
Nay.
Ms. Williams?
No.
McDaniel?
No. Okay, so the amendment doesn't carry. Now we go back to the original motion to accept Exhibit M1. Would you please call the roll for that?
Okay, Ms. Causey? No, I feel that we can make better use of these dollars, and I would hope that we can have a majority vote no, so then we can discuss and bring it back next week. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
No.
Gillis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Ylfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Vurch?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
So the motion carries to approve the operating budget. Thank you, Mrs. Saris. Our next agenda item is Personnel Matters. I ask Dr. Mayo to come forward.
Good evening, Chairman McDaniel, Vice Chair Gillis, Dr. Dance, members of the Board. I like Board consent for the following Personnel Matters: retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, deceased recognition of service, and certificated appointments.
Do I have a motion to approve Exhibits N1 and N5 through N5?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Mayo. Dr. Dance, I'm calling on you for the administrative appointments.
Thank you. Chairman McDaniel and members of the Board, I would like to bring forward for your approval the following administrative appointments. Assistant Principal Lansdowne High School and Coordinator in the Office of Organizational Development.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as presented in Exhibit O?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to introduce two new individuals to their position, but not new to our school system. First is for the Assistant Principal position at Lansdowne High School, currently right now an English teacher at Lansdowne High School, and that's Catherine Smith. Catherine, I know Mr. Miller is extremely excited. Do you have any family or friends here with you tonight? Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Next is for the Coordinator in the Office of Organizational Development, currently right now a supervisor of leadership development in that same office, and that's Kim McMinim. Kim, I know Bill is excited, so other than Billy and Christina, what other family and friends you have with you tonight? Congratulations, Kim, we're proud of you.
Thank you, Dr. Dance. Our next agenda item is New Business, Contract Awards. At this time, I'll talk, turn it over to Mr. Gillis.
Thank you. Earlier this morning, this morning, it seems like this morning, earlier this afternoon, the Contracts Committee met, and we bring to you Items 1 through 3, which were recommended for your approval, and Item 4, which had of the four members a two-to-two vote, so there's no recommendation.
All right, let me start by asking if I have a motion to approve Items P1 through P3.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment about MBU 50916. I think that may be Item 3.
Okay.
I'd like to separate out JMI 60516.
Which item?
That's number 4.
That's number, yeah, we're separating that one.
Great, thank you.
So, let me think. Let me get a motion to approve Mr. Vurch, and then we'll discuss the item you would like, is that okay?
That works fine, my comments were very brief.
Do I have a motion to approve Items P1 through P3?
Well, except I got a comment on 3, which I believe is the...
Yeah, he wanted a motion and then the discussion.
Wow, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll second it. I'll make the motion. I'll second it, too.
Okay, now, there's some discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Vurch.
With regard to Chase Elementary School Air Conditioning, I just wanted to verify that this is actually Phase 2 of air conditioning at Chase Elementary School. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know what, Phase 1 was the electrical upgrade.
Correct. Reason why I ask is because I was actually there, I was there with Tara Wilkins, the principal, walked through that school, I think even the fact that the Deputy Superintendent was with us when we did. It was a hot day, and I could actually see the work being done outside, and I'm glad to see that the system is following through and going in with Phase 2. And it's not an inconsiderable sum that's being spent on Chase Elementary School. The way I look at it, it's like $2.5 million plus.
That's right.
You know, as the elected, as the non-elected Board Member, the appointed Board Member from our sixth district, I think this is a good, necessary improvement. I know it'll be certainly welcomed by the parents and the children and the staff in that school.
Okay, thank you. So we've had a motion and a, we don't need a second, I guess, all those in favor of approving Items P1 through P3, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So it carries P1 to P3, and I know we'll have some discussion, we'll just have some general discussion on Item P4.
Sure. The, this was a matter that came before the Board last meeting, and Mr. Saris presented it then. The Contracts Committee had a substantial discussion about it earlier today. Mr. Saris, I don't know whether you want to frame the issue again.
Yeah, I think the only issue that I wanted to mention was the pricing information on the projector itself, because the total proposal of over $4,400 includes a variety of services, installation, electric cable, warranty, service, project management, training, et cetera. So, but the question came up about the specific projector itself and the cost of that. Lions Mill Elementary was equipped with Epson projectors. The price that we paid was the manufacturer's suggested retail price of $1,399. The price for the... The price for the box light projector that is included in this contract is, let's see here, oh, $1,699. And so that would be an additional $300. We talked about the fact that the box light proposal includes replacement bulbs, which under our Epson contract, we purchase, typically over the course of four years, we might purchase two bulbs based on the projected life. So, the manufacturer's suggested price there is about $220 per bulb. So, to try and make it an apples-to-apples comparison, it would be about $1,839 versus $1,699, give or take, depending on whether you use one bulb or two. So, I think they're fairly comparably priced, and I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at that underlying piece of information as part of that larger discussion.
Okay, thank you. There are other questions from Mrs. Saris regarding the projectors? Mr. Collins?
Georgia, would you explain to the full board my suggestion that we make this a one-year contract?
Yeah, that is something that if the board directed us to do, we believe that we have the, the leeway within the terms of the proposal to do so.
So, explain, explain how I vote on this.
So, well, I think, and I don't know, in my experience, my brief experience with Contracts Committee, I believe we would have to amend this exhibit because the current exhibit provides for a term of four years and four months, and we would need to also align the spending authority with the term, which I think would have to be at least one year, and proceed on that basis to amend the resulting contract with the vendor accordingly. I don't think we have to amend the contract. I think we have to amend this exhibit and then vote on that amendment.
Okay, I, I think I understand it, but I don't think I could explain it. That's why I asked George to do it. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I just think that we ought to, before we make these larger, very, very large commitments, that we should, that we should, you know, try it out for a year. The only comment that staff made at the Contracts Committee, Lloyd suggested that it might be a little more costly if you only do it for a year. I, I don't really believe that because I know how competition would work, and I know how the, how the, the complex, as I refer to it, the technology, educational complex, are so aggressively pursuing contracts for, for the opportunity to get into this county, the 25th largest school system in the United States, they'd be very amenable to giving it a one-year shot, and I just think it would be a wiser decision for us to do it in that fashion. I don't want to slow this program down. I don't want, but I just think we should take a look at it and let, and whoever's on the board next year have the opportunity to, to see if they want to go full bore with a larger contract. So, I would make the motion that we, we make it that kind of a contract and ask George and company to, to do those things, to make it that type of a contract, and either bring it back to us at the next meeting for a vote. That will give us, still give us plenty of time. So I would press that motion.
And I, I know some other board members. I was just going to follow up. I also heard the conversation earlier that when Mr. Collins asked a question about requesting quotes for one year versus four years, and we really don't know if there's any additional expense at all, and we could imagine that there would be some, but it would be a good piece of information, I think, for the board to have. You know, if we go out and we find out it's extremely more expensive, but I think, in my opinion, the effort to do that would be a good piece of information for the board.
Well, could I just interject? We're getting advantage by, you know, as with stat, we only exercise one annual lease at a time. So, we've got the benefit of the multi-year pricing already built into this RFP, and so in that sense, we're not, we're not going to rebid this proposal. We have a bid that's, that's acceptable, and we can use the pricing that's provided for in this proposal, and as with any of these contracts, we only go one year at a time.
Cut it off.
So, so we can, we're using the, we're getting the benefit of this, the pricing that we've talked about. So, my concern is if we went out and rebid it using basically the same criteria, that we would have some legal challenges from the vendors who all made a very substantial effort to put together proposals through a multi-tier process. So, we would really have to dramatically change the scope if we were to rebid it, but we can go forward under the terms we have in front of us.
And do what I ask you to do? And make it a one-year?
Yes.
Under the terms we have before us. I mean, I certainly don't want to screw up the program, so, but, but I just...
This is a four-year lease, so it'd be...
I, I understand that, but I...
Exercise our option to get out after one year is what you...
Right, so, yeah, but, well, George, let me ask you this, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm barking up a tree with, doesn't make any sense. Does what I'm suggesting, given, given my concerns about the, that I have of committing when I see a $41 million price tag, and I'd prefer to see a $10 million price tag for this year? Am I, is that a distinction without a difference, are you saying?
Yeah, right. We would have that appropriation and that, I mean, that spending authority. We don't have the money yet.
So, so...
But we, but we're asking for the spending authority if, for instance, if you wanted to say one year and $10 million, we would, if we executed a lease, and the lease portion of that was, you know, the, the annual portion was $2.5 million, we would acquire $10 million worth of equipment and pay it off at $2.5 million a year for four years, and then if we wanted to go to year 2, 3, or 4 for an additional amount of equipment, we could do that also subsequently. So, yes, you can give us this authority, the $10 million, and we can exercise it under a lease that would go out $2.5 million a year for four years.
And we would accomplish the same purpose for next year for our schools and for the children.
We would be able to do Phase 1 of 4, correct?
Okay, well, that's, that's what I would like to propose, because I think it's, it's a more prudent way to start some of these new things, and it might, it might result in the next year's board looking at it a little more closely again, and we'll have something to measure it by and see how, how good it was. So I don't see any downside then, as you just explained it. So I think, I think that the motion, given my objective of reducing that number for, is very, is very useful and good policy, so I would, I would hope that we can adopt that.
Okay. Ms. Causey, and then Mr. Stewart.
In Building and Contracts Committee, I went over some information that I'll just try and quickly review, but Senator Collins, to your point, to do just one year of this is not, is not sufficient in my mind. My motion then and my motion now would be to put this back out to RFP, but to do it one year at a time, and to also allow other vendors the opportunity to rebid, because what this, what this contract actually is, is this administration going for the brightest, the shiniest, the newest, the most expensive thing, so it would be a more expensive projector, a more expensive bulb than what we're using at Lyons Mills. I understand those bulbs are actually $90. And when there are schools in our system that have children being taught in closets, that don't have water, that their parents want them to drink. So again, it's the, it's the, it's the, it's the philosophy that we have money for the shiny new things, for starting out with, the first rollout is going to be seven of the 10 schools or lighthouse schools, so, and then the other schools are going to be left with less, because we're continuing with the philosophy of letting them buy the shiniest, newest, most expensive thing, as opposed to what we currently have working at Lyons Mills, which is a brand-new school with a brand-new system, which is working well. They're also proposing a brand that has less than 4% of the market share, and Epson has 68.9% of the market share. So they've had projects before where they've had projectors discontinued after one year. So for technology, to map out these four-year projects with the newest technology, the shiniest thing, is number one, expensive, more so than it needs to be. The other thing is the sound management program is, is lumped in and not extra, and I can tell you from talking to teachers, their classrooms aren't big enough to warrant four speakers and the teacher walking around with a wireless headphone on. So it's not just the one year. It's setting the tone for how we're going to move forward, spending money, and after hearing week, I mean, meeting after meeting and email after email from our parents and teachers anonymously and other stakeholders, taxpayers, that we don't need this to provide the instructional benefits. We don't need the newest, shiniest technology all the time. So my motion would be to send it back out to RFP.
Okay, let me, first of all, just...
For one year at a time.
Let me, first of all, just...
And it can be a four-year lease.
Kathleen, Kathleen, whoa, let me just withdraw my motion, and, and then the, the chair can open it up for, for other motions, because I, I like yours better.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, and then Mr. Yoffelder.
Well, my question originally, before Mr. Collins withdrew his motion, was whether that particular idea would change our rights under the contract at all. It seems as though we still retained the right to terminate after a year and not move forward, so our authority would still have to be renewed each year, and we'd have that ability if we deemed it necessary and found that the progress of this or the efficacy of this program was wanting that we could terminate.
Okay, let me make sure I understand. So, under the current proposal, you're asking if we can re, extend, go back and add to our authority on an annual basis? Is that correct? Or...
No. My understanding was that Mr. Collins was suggesting that we make this a single-year contract, and as of right now, it stands at a four-year contract.
May I, may I just jump in? I think there's a series of four contracts. Each one is four years, a four-year lease, so it would be, it would stage out a four-year lease every year over the course of time. So the, Mr. Collins' motion before he withdrew it was to have a one, one contract that was a four-year lease, but he's withdrawn that, and Ms. Causey, I think, says let's just lease some projectors for one year. I think that's what...
No, I'm saying to send, to not vote for this contract, to send it back to RFP for one year of a four-year lease, but open it back up to the vendors to see if we can get the same functionality, which I know we can because we already have it at Lyons Mills, for less money, so that we can have more money to allocate to other things in our county where we hear constantly what the needs are.
And I'm concerned that it will encourage formal protests and litigation unless we substantially change the terms of the RFP and the scope of the project, because you have vendors who, in good faith, made a proposal, and I don't see anything out there apart from maybe the price of a light bulb that you have pointed out is a significant difference in the price of the projector, and we haven't gotten into talking about functionality, warranties, and other items. So I just want to caution everybody not to go down a path that's going to lead to legal complications, okay?
Well, I think every vendor knows that it's pending board approval, and if the board doesn't approve it, the board doesn't approve it. The other issue is to have the sound management system set off separately, because that is not necessary for every classroom in this county.
You can't, you're going to have to substantially change the terms of the RFP more than just by the number of years or...
So this is, this is where, I sort of add a comment here. Traditionally, it's been the practice of the system to purchase technology. Technology, particularly projectors, have a life cycle of four or five years, and then we're trying to figure out what we're doing with that technology, and we're trying to purchase additional. When the RFP was written for this by George in your department, it was to lease, knowing that at the end of that lease cycle, you would refresh your technology. I would be very, I would just caution the board that when we develop tech specs with academics and IT at the table, it's geared on what professionals and academics have done, working with our teachers and working with our principals of what classrooms may need. So if the board is saying that, you know, I just would be very cautious when we, I would say we probably want to say to the curriculum committee, you know, how do we make sure that every single classroom has X specs, which was sort of designed that way, and then to figure out how might we procure basically what academics and what our schools are saying they may need in 1, right? But I think the fundamental difference of what Ms. Causey's saying is that in Lyons Mill, we actually purchased equipment, but in this particular case, we're actually changing our philosophy to saying we're going to be leasing over a four-year cycle. But in every single contract that you guys have, Margaret Ann and, you know, I'm sorry, I'm calling you out, Margaret Ann, but we actually have opportunities in the contract to where if the board gave spending authority right now, that is not saying that we're going to automatically execute year 2 or year 3 of that contract, right? All we're asking for is purchasing authority now to start the work of Phase 1. So in terms of what you're saying, Mr. Stewart, is that when Phase 2 comes around, that's a new lease that we would have to do. We don't have to say we're going to obligationally go into that lease.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think Mr. Yoffelder, and then I'll come around.
For, for maybe some of us, logistically, logistically, I'm not sure I understand. So, how many instructional spaces do we now have projectors in?
Well, we, we currently have about 6,100, and we've priced this out at 6,900 over the four-year term.
So this 6,900 will replace what we presently have, is that correct? Is, am I right? More or less? I mean, we'll actually get more.
We don't have projectors in every classroom right now.
We don't?
We do not.
The way I'm looking at this, that we're saying we want a projector in every classroom.
Correct, in every, in all 6,900 classrooms.
So what you're saying is that the first phase, we're only going to get 25% of the 6,900 installed in the first year? Or are you going to get all 6,900 in the first year?
No, you're only doing, the first proposal is 450 classrooms for the first year.
Okay.
Then the second year is 2,000 classrooms.
And now we, we're still, that's 2,400, and we got 6,900. So somebody's going to wait to year 4 before they get a projector.
Yes, sir. It is a four-year contract.
Okay. You know, you know, it's really not a lease. It's a lease purchase. You own it at the end of four years, so just a fancy way of financing, that's all.
But you have the ability to, to move and refresh that technology versus it being in the inventory.
Explain that to me. Let's go through the first year. We installed 450 in year 1.
And then in four years, after we pay it off, we have the option to either renew it back to the leasing company and go to another contract and get newer, newer projectors at that point.
What happens to the, what happens to the old ones? Because they all become...
It can go to fair market value at that point. It just depends on...
It says it goes, it becomes the property of BCPs.
It can become the property if we...
Well, it says it does.
It says it does.
At the end of the lease period, all hardware becomes the property of BCPs.
Yes.
So now we have...
Now we own it, yes.
Now we own it. So if we wanted to, if that's the useful life for years, and we had to take those out, then we'd have to buy new ones or lease new ones.
Yes.
So we're, we're doing a four-year purchase of some equipment?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to get clear on this. So you're saying 450 the first year, 2,000 the second year. What happens to year 3 and 4?
Still be 2,000 each every year.
2,000 each, okay.
That doesn't get you to 6,900. That's okay. It's not a math class.
6,450.
Mr. Collins?
Let me, let me digest. Go ahead, let me digest this now.
Are you finished, David?
Are you finished, David?
Yeah, I'm trying to digest what we're doing.
So now we're down to 6,450. How many classrooms now have projectors?
Well, all of our new construction and renovated classrooms have it. And then I would say, right now, we're sitting around just under 900 classrooms.
Okay, so right now, we have 900 classrooms that have a system like this or not as sophisticated as this?
No, it's close to 10 years old.
What we have is 10 years old.
Except for the new renovation classrooms and new construction.
What we're saying here, we're only going to keep, we only want to use it for four years.
Yeah, we're replacing equipment that has been installed over the last 15 years in a lot of our classrooms.
Yeah, but I'm going back to what David was reading here and what you just said. At the end of the four years, we're going to start over again and get new ones again.
Correct. If we go with this contract, we get on a four-year recycle plan for projectors. We have not had that in the past in this district.
So four years from now, you're going to come to the board, whoever's here, who's ever running the show, who's ever in your job and Dallas's job and all the board members' jobs, are going to have another $41 million contract.
We're only going to replace 400, we're only replacing the first year, we're replacing the first 450.
Yeah, but he said in four years from now.
Yeah, we're replacing the first 450.
You get 450.
Yeah, but four years from now, you'll come back for $41 million authority again, or maybe by that time, it'll be $50 million.
Yep.
I hardly believe it's not, you only got a four-year life out of a projector. I mean, I guess if that's what it is-
The fact is, we don't, though, David. The stuff we're using now is 10 years old, he said. I don't get this. I mean, I just don't get it.
Does my motion stand?
As far as I'm concerned, mine's not. Mine's gone.
Yeah, would you, I'm sorry, I'm going to have Mr. Vurch have the question, and then we'll come back to your motion.
The four-year leases, each year, let's put it this way, there's an overall contract, which is what is before the board. In that contract, it is contemplated that over the following four years, there would be a number of leases entered into by the board. Each one of those leases would be four years in length, is that correct?
Correct.
So actually, what the board would do tonight would tack on four years at the end of the fourth year. So actually, this is projecting this spending for eight years, unless, what you've told me, is that each lease is a year and not a four-year lease.
Well, each lease is executed in a year. We take delivery of all that equipment in that year and then have a-
We have it for four years.
We have a four-year obligation.
The next year, the same thing. The next year, the same thing. And the last year, the same thing again. So that's another four years on, four years out from here. So it's actually, we're talking about something eight years down the road.
But we don't have to proceed with that.
I understand, I hear you. But there's a separate distinction there, because there's an extension contemplated. So Nick, what I'm trying to get to here is, we have an overall contract right now. It has an extension component to it. But within this original contract, there are four years in which there will be four leases, each executed for a four-year period. So Nick, whether we renew or we don't renew, the fact is, we still have four more years on the last, on the fourth-year lease. So what we're doing tonight is extending for another eight years.
Right, but Steve, I might be mistaken. But my understanding was that as this rolls out into additional classrooms in year two and three, we would have to go to year four, for example, if we determined after year two or year three that this is a bad investment, that we don't want to proceed.
Correct, but the prior leases, they still continue to run even if we elect to pull out of that contract.
I'm with you.
Exactly. So where I think we're at is, either we like this approach, and believe me, we got to have technology in schools, the superintendent's dead on, we've been buying technology. It may have been a black-and-white TV set when I was in school, but it's technology, and we continue to do it, and we will have to do it into the future. The question is whether this vehicle, as designed, is the vehicle we should be using. I think we should actually rebid it. I don't think we're going to be in trouble legally, although we do have folks who can advise us on that regard, because everything was contingent on this board approving the contract anyway. And if everybody's got the same set of new defined rules, well, then they've got the new set of new defined rules under which to bid under. So there's been no favoritism portrayed, that I know of, and, I mean, that may just be my simple procurement background, but that's how I foresee that. So for me, should we rebid or should we proceed with what we have? I'm inclined to say we should rebid, and that's how I'll vote.
Ms. Johnson?
Can you explain why the end date is June 30th, 2025?
Just because of the five-year extension that's part of this proposal. So you've got four years, four months, and then a five-year extension? Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
So George, then, if we buy 450 next year, that's really six years' worth of paying for those 450?
No, I think it's just four years.
So what's the four years and four months?
Well, that's to get us to June 30th of this fiscal year end. So in other words, we're going from this month through the end of 2016, and then four more years to 2020, and then five years to 2025.
I'm not being disrespectful to you, I'm just thinking of the hour. I know enough or I don't know enough that I can't vote for this.
Okay, Mr. Gillis, did you have a-
Yeah, so I just, the way I always read our little summary sheets is, if we have a term and an extension, then the monies that you're seeking would satisfy the obligation during the term and the extension.
Correct.
So, but you've explained here that the $41 million is for the first four years, not for the almost 10 years.
Correct.
So why, usually, the sheet delivers us a term and an extension and a total amount. So why is this different?
Um.
And what good would an extension be if you don't have any contracting authority?
I think you're correct, that in this case, the five-year extension is not particularly relevant.
Well, you don't have, you wouldn't have any funding authority.
Well, we only, the funding authority only comes every year. So in this case, if in the fourth year, we, you know, after three years, after four years of leases, that fourth lease would go out into this extension period. That's the only reason that it's there.
Right, so if there's no downside to the system buying a one-year, the first contract or the four-year lease, like Ms. Causey suggests, and having the curriculum committee review the performance, then what's the difference? Why would we want to have four years? So I'm with you.
All right.
Can we make a note of that?
Well, again, we have-
Brother Gillis, can I call you that now?
We have a motion. Now, again, Ms. Causey, would you please state your motion? Go ahead.
I move that we send this RFP back out to bid, that we also separate out the sound management system, since I've heard from many teachers that they do not want nor need four speakers in their small classrooms, and that we do it for a one-year contract.
May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Saris, and Mr. Brown, and Mr. Dixon. We appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Our next item is new business report on the Southwest area elementary school boundary study recommendation. And I could call forward Ms. Miller, Dr. Wheatley-Phillip, and Mr. Cropper. He's here.
Good evening, Chair McDaniel, Vice Chair Gillis, Dr. Danz, and members of the board. We are Dr. Monique Wheatley-Phillip and Ms. Heidi Miller, co-chairs of the Southwest Boundary Committee.
The objective of the Southwest Boundary Area change was to reduce overcrowding in nine Southwest area elementary schools.
There are a number of construction projects underway to ease overcrowding and to improve the facilities. In 2016, there are replacement or additions underway for Catonsville, Westchester, and Westtown Elementary Schools. In 2017, a replacement school is scheduled for Relay and for Lansdowne Elementary. Plans for a replacement school have been added to the 2017 capital improvement plan. However, we recognize that the new construction does not address all the needs of the Southwest. Other regions in the Southwest will need to be targeted for future capacity relief efforts.
Guided by policy in Rule 1280, which states that the superintendent will initiate a boundary process for three reasons. For construction of a new school or addition to an existing school following funding approval by the state and/or county. Second, when school closures or consolidations are deemed appropriate by the superintendent. And third, to balance enrollment between schools under or over the state-rated capacity. There are four phases to the planning process, beginning in April through August of 2015. Phase one began with the superintendent's decision to initiate the process. Phase two was the orientation process for principals and communication to the community. Phase three was the preparation of data and information, and phase four was the convening of the committee. The work of the Boundary Committee began in September 2015 and concluded in December 2015. The Board of Ed decision is planned for March 1st, 2016. The new boundary implementation will then occur from March through August of 2016. We would now like to introduce Matt Cropper, GIS Consulting, who will walk us through the boundary study process and present the recommended option.
Thank you. So schools who were represented in the boundary study were defined as schools that either are undergoing a capital improvement project or schools that were adjacent to those that are undergoing some improvements, which are added capacity as a result of new construction or additions. There were 11 total schools identified in the study area of those that could be affected as a result of this process. The committee was provided with information as it relates to Rule 1280, and they really followed these guiding principles as they were looking at evaluating the feasibility of moving boundary lines one way or the other. Some of the things that were really pertinent in this area were using efficient use of space, balancing building utilization, using natural roads and natural geographic features, man-made geographic features, and then looking at diversity and the impacts on diversity with various plans, to name a few. This area, the local area committee also felt that it was important to focus on some additional factors, such as maintaining the continuity of neighborhoods and the impact of transportation and walkability. Walkability in the Catonsville area or the Southwest area of this study area was a high priority, and there was a lot of discussion around walkability and the impacts on walkability. The Boundary Study Committee was comprised of 45 total members. There were 11 principals that sat on the committee, and the principals were provided input throughout the process, but they were non-voting members, so they were not allowed to vote on the final plans as they were finalizing their recommendation. There were 33 teachers and parents on the committee, and those teachers and parents were sought out by principals who know the community to get active participants to serve on this committee. In addition to the 33 teachers and parents, there was the Chair of the Southwest Advisory Council, who sat on the committee. And the committee was supported by the assistant superintendents, the school administrators, and also myself and our staff at Crawford GIS Consulting. The Boundary Study met seven times through the course of the study, from September through December. So they really put a lot of hours into meeting time, and then also did a lot of time studying the information and the data in between meetings. They, at the beginning of the process, they looked at the building blocks of redistricting, so they evaluated what we call planning blocks, which are small planning units, and they evaluated those and gave feedback to make adjustments to those. And then they really looked through multiple scenarios through the course of the study to evaluate which ones were best, best met the needs of the area and the objectives and the criteria. All of the materials that were presented to the committee were made available online. So all of the materials that were handed out to them, usually the next day, were made available online, so the public could print off the copies or reference the materials and everything that was being shared with the committee at the meetings. The public was very engaged in the process. We had, I would say, anywhere from 60 to 100 observers at every single meeting, and it was very important to have them there. They were there as observers at the committee meetings, but in between meetings, they provided a lot of good information and input for the committee's benefit in the form of emails, and also there was a general comment forum on the website, that we were receiving lots of good input from the committee or from the public, and we shared that information to the committee at various times. The meetings were also streamed live, on livestream, and the copies of those livestream videos were also made available on the website, so people could go back and look at the video at a later time. As I said, everything was made available online. In addition to giving the public the opportunity to provide input through the process, the committee invited the public to a public information session, where the committee had narrowed down to about four options at that time. And they invited the public to come out, look at the maps, learn about the process, and then talk with the committee members and the staff around the maps and discuss some of their concerns. There was an online survey that was made available for that community information session, and we received about 1,200 responses to that online survey, in addition to the emails and the other information. So there was a lot of good feedback provided throughout the course of this process. As I said, the committee really spent a lot of time and evaluated multiple scenarios. There were 23 total scenarios that were evaluated through the course of this study. So the beginning point of the process, the committee is looking at, how many scenarios can they develop to accomplish the objectives and criteria? And then once they feel like they have a good number of scenarios on the table, then they started the process of elimination and selecting scenarios that they felt best met the criteria and objectives. The committee recognized that there was no single scenario that was, that may address capacity pressures in the Southwest area. And they also recognized that no single scenario will satisfy the guiding principles equally. And what I tell committees, this committee and committees across the country are, when you look at the criteria, the best plan is one that touches on the criteria, on different components of the criteria, but doesn't focus solely on one of the criteria. If you start to focus only on one piece of the criteria, you deviate from the others. And so the best plan is one that touches on the criteria as a whole, but doesn't focus solely on one element of the criteria. So as I said, when the committee was working through those 23 scenarios, they narrowed it down to four options to take to the public at that public information session, as I The committee then, once near the end of the process, formulated a recommendation. I really commend their hard work and the amount of time and effort and their commitment to the school district. They really did a great job in this process. There was an additional meeting in September and December that was scheduled so that the committee could fully deliberate on their recommendation and finalize their recommendation. When it got down to the end, there were three scenarios, final options that were considered, that were variants of options that were presented to the public. They heard the public's feedback, and they continued to make adjustments that made the options better in terms of the criteria and the objectives. And those were options 3.2A revised, 3.2B revised, and 3.3. So I'll show the current boundaries, where you could see just before any adjustments were made, are on the screen. And then option 3.2A revised was the first option of the final three that were considered. 3.2A revised affected six total schools, a total of 378 K through 5 students. Option 3.2B revised- Option 3.2B revised affected the same number of schools, six total schools were affected, but 346 total students were affected in option 3.2B revised. Option 3.3 affected more schools. It affected nine total schools within the study area, nine out of the 11, and 708 total K through 5th grade students were affected if option 3 were to move forward. So the committee voted to recommend option 3.2B, the revised 3.2B. Again, they really looked at, we gave them time to study all the body of work that they have been working through and studying over the course of the whole study period, and to formulate and finalize their recommendation. The tally at the last meeting, the December 16, 2015 meeting, were 16 total votes in favor of option 3.2B revised. 3.3 received six total votes, and 3.2A revised received two votes. So there was a clear winner in the case of the recommendation. The recommendation does balance enrollment among schools, among most of schools, but it does not completely resolve the capacity pressures in the region. Schools that were affected include Arbutus, Catonsville, Halethorpe, Hillcrest, Relay, and Westchester, and schools on the northern and southernmost areas of the study area were not impacted as a result of the recommendation. Those include Edmondson Heights, Johnny Cake, Lansdowne, Westtown, and Woodbridge. So we have the current, the current boundaries again for comparison, and then the recommendation, which is, was 3.2B revised, is the recommendation that this committee is bringing forward to the board at this time. In addition to the maps, there are some statistics in this presentation, and these are the statistics that the committee was working with throughout the course of the study. But you can see the current enrollment of the schools and the current utilization of the schools as it relates, and compare that to the recommendation, and you can see that the schools that are highlighted on the table in blue are the ones that were impacted. And you could see that the resulting utilization does provide relief to those schools. In addition to enrollment and utilization stats, the committee was looking at the impacts on demographics and a number of students that were impacted total. And so this table just shows you the before and after of the percent minority in free and reduced-priced lunch student percentages, before being the current school boundaries and after being the recommendation. And again, the total number of students that were impacted as a result of this recommendation are 346 total K through 5th grade students.
Regarding implementation of this boundary change, we noted at the start of this presentation that the boundary change process follows the addition of capacity that will be provided over the next two years through construction projects we listed. You will recall that three projects will be completed in August of 2016, and one, Relay, will be completed in August of 2017. The committee recognized and supported that this would be a phased implementation due to the timing of the completion of the construction projects. Our goal, which was supported by the Boundary Study Committee, is to move students when seats are available and not move students to already overcrowded schools that will ultimately get relief when new seats are ready. Therefore, we project about half of the students that might be impacted would move for next school year, and half would move for the start of the 2017, 2018 school year. All students whose homes will be the newly zoned Catonsville, Halethorpe, and Westchester will attend those schools in August of 2016. All students whose homes will be the newly zoned Relay and Arbutus will attend those schools in August of 2017. There are exceptions to this. Students attending a magnet program, the magnet program procedures and rules continue to apply, and students going into 4th and 5th grade and siblings currently enrolled in the year the boundary goes into effect who may apply and be granted a special permission transfer according to Rule 5140.
So in conclusion, please refer to the following upcoming dates. The Board of Education public hearing is scheduled for February 17 at 7:00 p.m. at the Catonsville High School auditorium. Snow date is February 18. The recommendation for approval will move forward at the March 1 Board of Ed meeting. We will now open the floor for questions.
All right. Are there board members that have questions for our panel tonight? Mr. Yulfelder?
Not in the form of a question. I just wanted to compliment the work that was done. This is my fourth boundary change since I've been on the board, and what was most important to me that it was, is that the process has been carefully followed, not only our policy, but the input from the public. And it appears to me that this was probably the most complete process that we've had in any of the previous boundary changes. I myself have no recommendation to change what the committee has decided is to be in the best alternative. We were inundated at times with emails, mostly negative, but my experience has been that those people who are against any change, and usually every parent is parochial about their school and their child, they do the writing. The ones who are satisfied, you never really hear from. So I'm very satisfied with the outcome, again, as long as the process was done democratically and in accordance with all our rules, regulations, and everything else. So I don't see any reason why, as a board, we should try and change anything that has been recommended, even though we've got several, a lot of negatives from some parents in some particular locations within the total area.
Thank you. I did have a question comparing option 3.3 to the current one that's being recommended. It seems that that 3.3 gives more relief to Johnny Cake Elementary School, I believe. And I was just wondering if the, there were some participants on the committee that didn't vote in the end, but did the participants that were representing Johnny Cake, did they actually vote in the process? Or how would, could you characterize the folks that voted for 3.3?
Well, I know that each school had one voting member present, and five, five of the eight that didn't, not voting, were members whose school was not affected. So there were people there, members from all schools at the final day when the votes were cast, and there was a lot of debate about that issue, providing relief or less or more relief to the various schools.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Causey?
I just wanted to say that I was fortunate to be able to attend one of the community meetings with Nick, and it was, to echo David, a very, very smooth process. And I know there was a lot of heated conversation at times, but you particularly handled it very well, and I did think that the folks had an opportunity to look at all the maps, to make some adjustments. So I think it was a really great process, and I want to commend Mr. Stewart, because I know that he's been spending a lot of time with the community on this issue, and just now, as other board members, are starting to also get some emails. But so I wanted to thank you for your efforts. I would like, not an answer now, but if you could email it to us. I am interested in specifically what leeway the board might have to give grandfathering, just one or two families, some of the emails that we have received. It seems to be a couple families that are moving mid-grades, might have to move mid-grades. But the planning blocks, because I had the opportunity to be there, so I drove around the neighborhoods, it does seem that the planning blocks do seem to be in the right place in terms of walking, the new walking walkers over to the new Catonsville Elementary School. But if there could be explanation given to the board members in an email of what leeway there is for the board to help individual families that may, you know, just be in transition a couple of years with their little people, to help them through, but not necessarily change the suggested plan.
Mr. Stewart?
Let me just add to that quickly, and what the difference would be between a waiver, so to speak, after the lines are created, and a grandfathering, and what the two different processes might look like to the extent that there's material differences. But Kathleen, also thank you for being so involved and making a big difference in this. It's easy to tell from the public involvement how much of a difference that you all made and the kind of work that you put in, but it's also the behind-the-scenes, the hundreds and hundreds of emails and different conversations that you all were having. So thank you so much. The difference is immense.
Yeah, again, I would echo the comments of board members. I did attend one of the sessions, and again, it was very encouraging to see how well the public, the community was working together to get through this, so I really appreciate all your efforts there. Ms. Johnson?
Question. I know the project was to relieve significant persistent elementary overcrowding, and when I notice, Hillcrest is just under one conveniently, and then we've got Catonsville that will still be significantly under capacity, and we've received a lot of emails as well about the plant, this one particular planning block and those attending Catonsville. Can you just speak around the difference of relief from Catonsville versus Hillcrest?
Yes, the committee looked at a multitude of scenarios. Some scenarios, they varied in terms of building utilizations when you compared, when you look at the, compare them together. Some did have more relief for Hillcrest and a higher utilization for Catonsville. And what the committee did was just, they were focused on all the criteria and weighing all of the different options in the criteria. And the committee felt that it was best to recommend this scenario. They felt it was the best plan for the area. It impacted fewer, the fewest number of students, and it also addressed some of the other concerns that the public was having as it relates to the criteria. So I would say that they did look at a variety of scenarios that had different utilization rates, and the committee, this is the recommendation that the committee brought forward, they felt it best met the criteria and objectives.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? If not, thank you very much. And I will note, again, there's a public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, February 17 at 7:00 p.m. The snow date is the next day at Catonsville High School. This will be an opportunity for the public to address the board on this matter. Sign up begins at 6:00 p.m. for those who would like to comment on the boundary. Members of the public may send their comments to the Board of Education or board members directly. The board will vote, as was stated by Ms. Miller, on March 1, 2016. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the one that was adjusted at the beginning of the meeting, new business action taken in closed session, and we'll ask Mr. Nussbaum to come forward.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, the board considered an appeal regarding a confidential employee matter in your quasi-judicial capacity. This matter was considered on the record. There was no oral argument. At this time, would be appropriate to confirm the action taken by the board in closed session in the matter, which is Hearing Examiner Number 14-48.
Do I have a motion then to approve the action taken in closed session?
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nussbaum.
And the order will be sitting on the desk for signatures.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is board comments, and I'll start with Mr. Stewart, since he's been away for a bit. We'll let him go first.
You are so kind. Thank you for indulging me. I'll be very brief. Dr. Dance, look forward to working with you in the next few years to make positive changes to our system and continue to serve our children and our community well. I wanted to just thank the members of the Lansdowne community for coming out and forth tonight. Look forward to working with them to bring sustainable and needed changes to our school, which is such a huge deal. But finally, I just want to thank Mr. Bowler and Mr. Montiotis, although they may have departed before this moment. Their difference has been impressive along the way, and each time I go one place, they've already been there 10 to 20 times before me, so I'm playing catch-up and always will. But thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Eaton, do you have any comments for us tonight?
Sure. In light of the late hour, I just want to say, I'm still good.[1684.03][1684.03](Laughter).
Ms. Causey?
In light of the late hour, I will say, good night.
Thank you. Mr. Yulfelder?
Good night.
Mr. Gillis?
Good night.
Mr. Collins?
Nighty night.
Ms. Johnson?
Congratulations, Dr. Dance.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I wanted to congratulate Dr. Dance on his renewal, and he knows that there will be some of us who will be keeping him on his toes over the next four years. I hope that the board can really address some things as we go into contract details and negotiations there. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Vurch?
I'd like to welcome back Mr. Yulfelder, who has been in Hawaii, so I would say aloha.
Thank you all. I would-
And thanks for the candy.
He ate it all.
I'm the talkative one. Thanks for the candy, Dan.
I'd just like to mention out there for information is revised Superintendent's Rule 1100 on community relations, revised Superintendent's Rule 6500 on instruction. And I'd like to mention that schools will be closed in observance of President's Day on Monday, February 15, and the next board meeting will be Tuesday, February 16, at 7:00 p.m. here at Greenwood. And then there's a public hearing on the boundary, which we just mentioned. So if there are no other business, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.